All right, Madam Mayor, if you would like to call the meeting to order?
Yes, I'll talk to you, bye.
Oh, you're there, okay, perfect.
We will start with Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Elliot, you want to lead us in the pledge?
This pledge is to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, and for its people.
You're lucky, I almost called on Arlo. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it to you.
All right, we'll take role, Breckus, Dor.
Here.
Delgado, absent at this time, Weber, Jarden, Reese, Shivi. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, I'm going to send it right back to you for item A three.
Our first item is public comment. We have two registered, Deanne Radcliffe, followed by Lieutenant Joe Robinson.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for your service. My name is Deanne Radcliffe and I'm a resident of RDI. Thank you for listing my concerns regarding irrigation water. I have water rights from the steamboat and receive my water from gate 10, which is right here on this photo. The water then flows via the irrigation lateral to my property and into a pond. It flows through my property via ditches and culverts and irrigates nine additional properties. Several property owners, only source of outside water for trees and other watering is water from the steamboat. And this, of course, is the Meridian 120, projects one and two, location. During the February 19th Planning Commission meeting, the developer representative said that the irrigation water would be put in a pipe to the users. He also stated that the HOA would have instructions to flush it twice each year. I have had several discussions, including this past Monday, that this is not what the neighbors want. The steamboat gates clog with mud and other debris, and piping this water will create issues that do not currently exist. Additional concerns are that code enforcement does not enforce CCNRs. The piping has not worked on the Meridian 120 North project, which is over by the warehouses in Boomtown, as those users have not received their irrigation water. I did not find any information writing regarding these proposals too, when I looked at the document last night. I feel that the condition of approval, along with correcting the laterals and keeping them above ground, would address these concerns. So this is the conditions of approval when the Meridian 120 projects one and two originally came in front of the Planning Commission in October of 2017. The final issue is access to clean out the gate and laterals. This map is from 1990 and prior to Reno land owning the property. It provides for this access. So down here, this is a large map, sorry, that's been shrunk, there's information about access and clean out the laterals. To clean out gate 10, I walk through a gate at the back of my property, and five minutes or less, I'm at gate 10. This access has not been perpetuated by the developer. The developer has proposed a walk-around of the property where I would sort of walk from my house right here, shh, all the way around here to clean that out, which is probably going to be at least an hour and a half versus my current right up to gate 10. And again, on that map, it is perpetuated. Talking with the ditch company, the message is that water rights are not being honored, sort of citywide, and a court order is needed to gain that access. I strongly, excuse me, I respectfully request that the City of Reno intervene and mandate that these issues be corrected in writing. Without intervention, I remain convinced that people with water rights will be forced to spend great sums of money on legal fees to get what is legally ours. I appreciate your time. As I drove here, I realized this is not the most important need in the entire world. There were homeless people on the street that I observed, and I'm sure you have a lot of concerns ahead of you today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Jordan, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Deanne, does the clerk have your phone number?
Yes.
Okay, I may have somebody reach out to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Lieutenant Joe Robinson?
Madam Mayor, Council, and Madam Manager, Lieutenant Joe Robinson, representing Chief Soto and the men and women of the Reno Police Department, came today to give a debrief, if you will, on the Clean and Safe operation that took place yesterday down by the railroad tracks. I know there's been a lot of media attention to it, and so I just wanted to come and give you all an update on what actually occurred down there. So it starts back on February 10th. The City of Reno received a health code violation, notice of violation from the Washoe County Health District, which steered us, our Clean and Safe team, to go down and take a more in-depth look at what was going on at the railroad tracks. During that time, we noted ourselves many, many safety concerns, including there's no escape routes, there was lots of folks camping between two fenced areas with no escape routes. Early in January, unfortunately, we had a pedestrian get hit by a train who was from one of these homeless camps, and in such close proximity to the railroad tracks, that caused us a lot of concern as well. RFD had concerns about getting their equipment down there in such a confined space, and there's many, many open flames, warming fires occurring down there. We also began to notice an infestation of rodents, and just an overall health and safety concern for everybody that was staying down there. So we really decided that we really need to take action as a city to assist in this problem. So starting back on February 26th, our Clean and Safe team began going down there, that was approximately eight days ago, and notifying folks that we'd be coming on March 4th yesterday to clean the area. We gave them opportunity to leave, told them that they were going to have to leave so we can clean it. We have to bring in heavy equipment. Public Works asked to bring in heavy equipment. It's unsafe to have people around while they're having their heavy equipment rolling through, so we actually need everybody to vacate the area for those purposes to clean it. We also provided numerous resources for seven days in a row. We had CAC case managers out there offering services, VOA case managers out there offering services, folks from our mobile outreach and safety team out there every single day offering services. Unfortunately, no one took us up on any of those services that were provided. Yesterday, we went out there at 5:00 in the morning, cleanup was to start at 9:30, so we gave them an additional three and a half hours to gather all of their personal belongings in order to, so they could vacate the area so we could start cleaning the area. At, we made contact with over 200 people that were living down there. We determined what there was our personal property and what they chose to leave behind. They were given the option of that. I'm running out of time, I apologize.
You're completely fine.
So seven days and three and a half hours leading up to this, they had ample time to gather what they needed, gather what they wanted. We're offered several resources, and then the cleanup began. We also brought resources down there with us again yesterday, as we did the seven days prior, and again offered resources for them. Two people took us up on getting bus tickets to get reunited with our families through our homeless liaison program.
No, you're fine.
Okay. And that was the process that we went through yesterday. So like I said, I know there was a lot of, maybe some confusion on what actually occurred. I'm willing to answer any questions about what occurred, but if anybody has any at this time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right, any questions from council members?
I do have a question. First of all, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. We've had a number of meetings, and I've found your leadership to be really compassionate, but also realistic, and so I thank you for that. The work that both RPD and our fire department are doing to keep people safe, I think, continues to be the primary mission, and I know that you're carrying that out well. I have, I guess, two questions. One is, you know, the notification of people. It's not like people have mailboxes. They don't have email where you're sending them a notice. There's not a place where you post it. Tell me a little bit about the process we are going through to ensure notification received, because of course, people tell me, "We got no notice." I don't know if those are people who were in another location, they were working, they were looking for, I don't know. And so I just want to make sure the public knows about the notification, so maybe I'll let you answer that, and then I might have just a second question.
Sure. So our notification process is, we actually go down and make face-to-face contact with everybody that's down there. If there is no one available, we do leave a written notice, but we make every effort to make face-to-face notification, and we did so several times over the seven days leading up to it. Anybody who we did not make contact with when it came time to the cleanup, we would store their property, we have to store their property for 90 days. We consider it abandoned. We did not have any abandoned property in this particular cleanup, and nor have we, since we started doing Clean and Safe.
And then you said that two people accepted family reunification, which I think is a good program if used correctly, and so I appreciate that information. What about any additional folks who requested service? Meaning, were there people who were offered service? And I know the numbers vary depending on what day of the week it was, but that you were offering service to, but they were service resistant, and then are there people who did receive services and you were helping them on their way? Tell us just about the numbers and what's going on.
Unfortunately for this particular cleanup, no one accepted services from us. We've offered it, like I said, seven days leading up, and during the time that we were doing the cleaning, and no one accepted services. And like I mentioned before, we had case managers from CAC, case managers from the VOA there, our mobile outreach safety team, our homeless liaison program. Unfortunately, not a single person accepted any of those resources until the day of where two people accepted bus tickets.
Okay, and if we went out there today, what would we see visually?
Today, they're still in the process of cleaning. It's obviously a heavy lift. It was a heavy lift, and it's continuing to be a heavy lift, so we're still in the process of cleaning out there. So today, if you were to go out there, you would see Public Works and our Quaid folks out there still continuing to clean with Reno police officers out there providing safety for those folks to do work.
I think ultimately, you know, we are struggling as a city because we have limited resources, and we really need all of our community partners to come along with us, so that's the City of Sparks, Washoe County. Councilmember Jarden has been working very, you know, hard on this issue, and so ultimately, while we aren't necessarily the right place where the bucket's supposed to stop, it's here, and so I want to thank you again for your outreach and your teams doing the work. I think we have a long way to go, because of course, we all desire a compassionate solution, and that solution, there's no one shot that's going to fix it all, so I thank you for that.
And you bring up a great point, sir. Currently, right now, the CAC is located within the City of Reno. For the last 15 years, it's been our top call-for-service location. We have 36 officers that work the CAC on a daily basis, and I know there's been talks about additional homeless shelters, homeless camps, places for resources, and I would just stress that, you know, if another one were to come to the City of Reno, I mean, I think chief would have to ask for 36 more additional officers just so we can keep police service. can keep police services at an acceptable standard for the rest of the community. So I ask this council, when you're looking at locations, just because it looks good on a map, doesn't mean necessarily it looks good for the services that we have to provide. So I would ask that, if, when those decisions are made, just because it looks good on a map, doesn't necessarily mean it's a good spot. I'd ask that the chiefs, the sheriff, the councils, the commissions get together and choose a spot strategically based on everybody's resources and not just a place that looks good on a map.
Yeah. Great point. Go ahead, Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you saying that. And certainly, the council and the regional partners have come a long way in collaboration. We just tend to, when something occurs like this, lots of misinformation, incomplete information gets out, and then we receive all of the, you know, communications of concern and accusations and that sort of thing. We know it's not an easy job. My question is on the Health Department notification. We received that, you said, on February the 10th.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the Health Department's requirement that we address the cleanliness, cleaning issues? And what is the penalty? What is the violation for not doing that?
So I actually have a copy of the violation here in front of me, and if you'd like, I would just read it to you. The violation was for all solid waste accumulation and storage, and it states in here as relating to people camping in the area. They informed us that fair to abate the violation within the timeframe, they gave us 30 days, would include further action against the city of Reno, including to, but not limited to, an issuance of a criminal citation. And again, we just use the violation to steer our city services to take a further look on it, on these situations. And there was other, there's plenty of no trespassing signs in that area. That area was never designed for pedestrian traffic at all. There were several enforcement actions that we could have taken, but we chose to be fair and help, and do our best to help everybody out, and everybody complied. And there was a lot of thank yous out there also, from the folks that were staying down there, to all of us.
That was nice.
Yeah. And again, thank you for all the work that you guys do. I know that this is something we struggle with. We are a very compassionate city. You know, we are the city that has the main shelter. We are the city that has the overflow shelter. We are the city that has the overflow to the overflow shelter. We are the city that has the dorms, and we are the city that will soon have the tiny homes. So when I say these things, it's to say that the city of Reno has been very aggressive in trying to address these issues with the limited resources we have. I am asking and maybe pleading with our regional partners to help us in this emergency situation, to locate properties within their jurisdictions to help disperse and address this, safe campsite, additional sites, whatever it may be. We simply, as the timing of this tied with our budget, we simply do not have the fiscal resources to address this any more than we already are, and there's no other way to say it.
Thank you for that. For the record, Reno Police Chief Jason Soto, I do want to make one more point that's very important for this council to understand, for this body to understand. We are very sensitive to this challenge that we have in front of us. But I also want everybody to understand what our number-one priority is as your police department, is the safety of our entire community. An additional location would require up to probably about 50 additional billets to keep it to where, at the safety levels that we have our current shelter at. We don't have an additional 50 people. I cannot spread those resources out. So for me, that's out of the question. And I understand that we need to figure something out, and that's why I have really expressed a lot in the last year of coming together as a region, because we are doing all the lifting. We have the only shelter in this community, and I understand we have another one coming to NAMSS, hopefully another two or three coming to NAMSS, but we can't do this alone. There's no way. We don't, we don't have those resources. And my number-one priority is the safety of this entire city, the entire city, and it's a big city.
Thank you. I think that's a good point, that we actually now register as a medium-to-large-size city, and people forget that. We're not so small anymore. And we were talking about, you know, certain things, maybe even at the legislature, looking at, you know, if your city has a population over 100,000, you're required to have a shelter, because then otherwise, it really stresses the resources that we have in our city that we're paying for other people's, you know, situations that we, I think you make such a great point. So I would ask the city manager, it would be great that when we meet with the county and the city of Sparks, that we have a joint meeting on this. I think, you know, that's one of the things that's been hard to sort of get them to the table when we talk about it. I'm just being very honest, calling the elephant out in the room, and, you know, it's, I've gotten a lot of pushback in those meetings. It's where we sort of set the priority of what we're going to talk about regionally. And, and I don't want to say, I mean, they, they are trying to understand the situation, but I think, you know, it's at a point where we're at a breaking point, and to, you know, to what you said, 50 people. This is how massive, so.
Fifty.
Yeah, 50, which we don't have.
No. And, you know, if, we've started looking at some, the time and the resources that we spend at our current shelter, and being the top call-for-service for the last 15 years, the dollar number to that is astronomical, because you're paying police officers to basically address this challenge, and it's very expensive when you're talking about, you know, teams on both sides of a shift, over three shifts a day, and then any additional emergencies that we have within the city. It's an expensive, expensive endeavor.
Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. You know, the C-HAB has become kind of the conduit for a lot of these discussions, not only from the board's position, but there's a lot of individuals, entities, interested parties that are at those meetings as well. The next one is April, first Monday in April, and I would suggest, I don't know that we have this item on the agenda, but I could talk to the chair to see if we could have this discussion. This isn't a long-term, to me, this is an emergency situation, that we need to find some compassionate way to help do all the things to keep our community safe and clean while still addressing the needs of those that don't have roofs. And, Madam Manager, if we could somehow work with our regional partners to get this on that agenda, I do feel like we've made progress with our regional partners. It's just reached a point where we need to move faster, and we need their help. And I don't think we're going to club them over the head to get them to do what we need help with. I think it's going to take us collaborating and maybe them understanding the severity that we're experiencing on a daily basis, and maybe, maybe that will move things a little quicker.
Yeah. I also just, I don't, I think this C-HAB is great, and I think you guys are doing great work there, but I also think that we need to have that conversation with our regional meeting, because I know Naomi sometimes has said, you know, "What are we doing?" Or people will ask, because we're not in those meetings, but it would get everyone sort of up to speed and hear what you guys, you know, have been doing, because I know we kind of put you over there, and then you sort of, you know, run with it. But I think it's such a large issue for everyone. It can't just be a small subcommittee anymore. I think it absolutely has to be at, at the board with all of our regional partners. So I would just ask that we can try again to see if we can get a meeting like that, so let me know. Go ahead, Councilwoman Jordan.
Well, you know, we are in the budget time, and we talked yesterday about having a revenue meeting, and I think we should, if we have any, even at the C-HAB or regional joint meetings, have something very concrete of the asks that we are asking for. I think we need to sit on our side of the resources, and we're going to have community development up in a little bit and talk about the federal programs. And I think we need to have kind of queued up from hours rather than general. And so I hope we can get that revenue meeting pretty, pretty soon. But in the meantime, Madam Manager, I met with a UNR graduate student yesterday after our meeting, and he was doing his final paper on this issue. Could you provide us the status of the occupancy rates of the VOA CAC, the overflow, the overflow to the overflow, and also some of the federal programs that we're going to talk about in budget here in a bit?
I can certainly do that, and I can also work on the concurrent meeting. I would remind everyone that we are in public comment right now, so.
Yeah, sorry.
This is an important.
Yes, I get that. So I will take that as just discussion and public comment, and maybe we can proceed now.
Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming, and please continue to come.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no further public comment. We're moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right. May I get a motion? I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. We're on item B1, and I believe, go ahead, Debbie. Thank you.
So just to remind the council, we are beginning with the fire department today, and I will turn it over to Chief Cochran.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, for allowing us the opportunity today to present on the fire department and our budget requests. Just a couple preliminary things. I want to introduce Aaron White, who's sitting behind me. He's the new administrative services manager. He's replacing Michelle Hobbs, if you can replace Michelle. Very steep learning curve for Aaron, but he's doing a fantastic job. Also, we had a very major apartment fire this morning, which I will talk about more as we go through the presentation. But the one thing I, on that, that I would like to start with is, you know, I come here and I do the things I do as a fire chief, but the amazing work done by the people, the men and women out on the street, is really where the credit lies, because they did a fantastic job this morning. Extinguish that fire, no civilians, and no firefighters injured. So that's a win at the end of the day. So, moving on to our budget presentation. You told me this would work. Now we're up. So here's the organization chart for the fire department, 266 total FTEs. This makes it look a little consolidated, because given that number of FTEs and what looks like a relatively small organization chart, but a lot of those people are concentrated in the operations division. That's where the majority of our people work, operate, and where the majority of our budget lies as well. If there is an interest, in fact, after this meeting, I will provide council with an expanded version of this, just as an informational tool. These are our core services, leading off with emergency medical services. That is the vast majority of the calls that we go on. Typically, around 70%, give or take, I think last year, we were at about 66% of our calls were EMS calls. I would normally lump that in with emergency operations, the next core service, because they're all emergencies, but because the EMS is a significant portion, is the majority of what we do, we separated that out. Emergency operations would then encompass everything else, the technical rescues, the fires, like what went on this morning, hazmat, vehicle accidents, anything like that that is not EMS. Although, truth be told, we consider every call an EMS call, because life safety is our number-one priority, so we are always concerned about that on literally every single call we go on. Fire prevention is the next division, the next core service. That, of course, is our planner view, inspections, building inspections. Lot of growth in that division this past year, double-digit percentage growth in that division, and we expect that, or what I'm hearing from community development is, we expect that to continue. Fleet maintenance, another core service. We have our own set of mechanics, because the fire apparatus that we use is our specialized equipment, that we, you want specially-trained people who can operate and repair the pumps, the ladders, the moving parts of all those apparatus that we rely on to provide the service that we do. Of course, program and service management, that is the backbone, the underpinnings of everything we do, keeping everything organized, keeping the lights on, keeping the apparatus running, keeping everybody paid. And then finally, and it's kind of axiomatic, it's last, safety and training. Safety is job one for us in literally everything we do, and that goes hand-in-hand with training. Every call we go on, everything we do, every decision we make is driven by safety. Looking at our top accomplishments from the past year, of course, the first one, most prominent, we've implemented and secured funding for a fire apparatus replacement program. That is a long-term program that we're looking at. It includes, we've already put our order in for this year of three fire engines and a new ladder truck. And then second, and those, these have been my one and one-a priorities, apparatus and people. Second, our next accomplishment, Safer Grant that this council approved, supported us in applying for. We were awarded that grant, added eight additional firefighters. Huge, huge change for us, because we're adding bodies, that's allowed us to upstaff. We now have gone from Rescue 7 to Engine 7. Very important, and we'll continue to work toward that, toward increasing that staffing level. And then increasing our paramedic-level service. We have eight companies that operate at the paramedic-level service right now. That is one of the strategic priorities of the city, and we're going to continue to work to grow that. Moving over to the major issues and strategies, see the, one of those is growing those number of paramedic companies. In our new recruit class, that just hit the line about three weeks ago now, we have a number of paramedics in that group. Once they have completed their probationary period and are fully cleared to work independently, well, not independently, because we always work as teams, as engine companies and truck companies, but they will help us add to that additional paramedic-level staffing. The number, the top issue there, developing a plan to increase staffing to mitigate the negative effects of high call volume. That's kind of twofold. We want to increase staffing, like I said, that's priority one right now, continuing to add firefighters to mitigate that call volume. And the other thing we're looking at in that regard is working on ways that we can reduce the number of calls we go on. And when I say that, I'm looking at calls that are non-immersion, calls that need a response, but they don't need a 911 response. And if there's a different way that we can handle that, whether through the community, the county, REMZA, alternative services, we want to do that as well, so that we're not using our valuable fire resources for non-immersion calls. And then we're looking at funding strategies, grant opportunities. You know, I heard different departments say, "We don't want to rely on grants and that type of opportunity as a, as a budget, or as a base-budget function." And I agree, but at the same time, it's something that I think we always need to be pursuing. We need to be looking at four opportunities to add additional revenue. I know that's a council priority as well, and grants are a great way to do that. We've been very successful. Moving back to the left side of that slide there, the Safer Grant is an example of that. I would also point out that two of those top accomplishments are inextricably intertwined with the city council and the support we received from the city council, that being the fire apparatus replacement and the authorization to take out some medium-term debt to support that, and of course, this council supporting the application, the ultimate award of the Safer Grant. Here's our budget, very similar to what you've seen in other departments in terms of the, not the total numbers, but the increase in what it looks like going forward, the anticipated budget going forward. As was mentioned with RPD, heavily weighted towards salaries and benefits, and that's because we are heavily weighted, we're a service department. We're heavily weighted towards personnel, and that's why most of our funding lies there, and that's why it's so important to support that aspect of our budget. Put my glasses on to go through the additional requests. So, number-one request, eight additional firefighters. I want to talk about that for a minute, because you've heard me say, and it's 100% accurate, we need far more than eight. We need dozens of new firefighters, additional firefighters, to increase our staffing, to upstaff our apparatus, to get additional trucks back out on the road. But I also want to be realistic. I know that coming in here and saying, "We need 50 firefighters," is not a realistic ask in a single fiscal year. So landed on the number eight, because I think that's achievable. It's also a number that makes a difference, allows us to upstaff, put additional bodies out on the street. Of course, I'm happy to add any firefighter that we can do, that we can add, but eight would make a difference in terms of being able to staff an additional apparatus, or, for example, upstaff a rescue to an engine. So that's where that number came from. I just wanted to clarify that it's not a number that represents the total need for the department right now. Ask number two, a data management specialist. We hear the phrase- We hear the phrase "data-driven decisions" a lot, and I think this council expects that, demands that, and they should. You should ask us, you should make sure that we are justifying what we are doing, why we're doing it, and we're doing that work, but we could really benefit from the addition of somebody who specializes in that and focuses on that, so that we're not trying to piecemeal together with the people we have. Number three, last week, I guess, not yesterday, but last week, you heard Debbie talk about overtime and some of the additional costs that we have, the payouts that we have. Number three is an increase in our staffing overtime and callback budget, to recognize that, for acknowledgement of that fact, that we're underfunded in that regard. Number four, specialized and programmatic training. I mentioned training and safety, safety being job one, and training going hand-in-hand with that. That item, that ask, is for additional funds to provide the training for our special teams, for EMS personnel, which is all of our personnel, career development, there's a number of categories that that falls into, and that's, we do most of our training in-house, and that's what that number is intended to support that application. Again, number five goes back to the underfunded nature of the payouts, the overtime that we have. We continue, we're going to continue to have that going forward, and so we're just asking that that be recognized in our budget. And number seven really falls into that as well, the unfunded vacation max, or over-max vacation payouts. Going back to number six, that is the first due program that was demonstrated at our, I think, the last meeting, or the meeting last week, where we showed how we've added this program, this software to our, all of our apparatus, so that responding units can get real-time information on the nature of the property, the buildings, the conditions of the property, to every call they go to. That's being utilized right now, and there's an annual licensing cost, which we are asking that that be built into our budget going forward. Number eight, station repairs and maintenance, including security fencing. We had an issue at Station Six where a couple cars were broken into, and we're looking at that, or we attribute that in part to the fact that people are using, they're cutting through the station, through the station property, to get to and from the bus stop that's out in front of the station, and that traffic across station property through the parking lot by these cars likely contributed to the break-in of those vehicles. So we're looking at security fencing there and at other stations. We also need sand oil separators at a number of stations, so that's what's built into that ask. Number nine.
What was that, what kind of separators?
Sand oil separators.
Oh, okay, for the vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe there's some ongoing maintenance and analysis costs with that, with sand oil separators. Number nine, really, probably should be number three, that's PPE equipment, our turnouts. That is the ensemble, if you will, that all the firefighters wear, their pants, jackets, boots, helmets, masks, everything they need to operate safely. There was some question, I know, a while back about, you know, those getting out of date, they're good for ten years. All our turnouts are currently in date, but we need this money in order to keep that program moving forward, to replace turnouts as they go out of date. We were, $150,000 was in our last budget. We're asking for that again this year, and again next year, and that will put us on solid footing for the foreseeable future, to maintain that program, to make sure that they have, they, the firefighters, have the equipment they need. Number 10 is a fire inspector. Notice that that, it says "cost captured under the CD request." That position is being funded by the BFAC. We have, I mentioned that there is an increase in the, in the work being done with fire prevention. That includes planner views and construction inspections, which is BFAC work. BFAC has the money, they've agreed to fund that position, and that's where, that's why we show it now in our ask. Fire fleet supplies and contracted repairs. We have that apparatus program, the new apparatus program moving forward, but we're not there yet in terms of turning over that aging fleet into a more modern, current fleet, so we still have numerous and expensive repairs that we're doing in our mechanic shop, but with those older apparatus, they need repairs more often, and the repairs they need are often more expensive. Number 12, our SEBA replacement program. Again, with the turnouts, SEBA is a critical part of the protective equipment, the safety gear that firefighters need to operate effectively. We do have two, number 13, we do have two computers in our fire prevention division that they use for planner views. They're specialized computers, so they're not captured in the IT computer budget. They need additional larger monitors, additional processing power, greater memory, so IT has recommended that we ask for those in our budget. Number 14, rescue task force ballistic gear. Success story, a win, we can actually pull that off our request. We were successful, we applied for a grant through the Attorney General's Office, we were awarded that grant, it's going to be coming to council at their next meeting, at your next meeting, for acceptance. So we do have the funding that we need to outfit the entire department with ballistic gear. So that's a win right there. Fire equipment service technician. This position, it is one FTE. What we're looking at there is somebody to do repair work that doesn't rise to the level of a fire mechanic, and what we're talking about there are the lubin' oil, the routine things that we need. We have over 100 vehicles in our fleet, and they're not all fire apparatus, some of them are just regular pickups, personal vehicles, and you don't necessarily need a fire mechanic to do repairs and regular preventive maintenance on those vehicles. So we're asking for a technician who could do that kind of repair, as well as small engine repair on a lot of the equipment we have, the smaller pumps, the hand pumps, saws, blowers, that sort of thing. Number 16, that's a placeholder, we've talked about, we have talked with the manager about the idea of moving our small or light-duty vehicles into a dedicated internal service fund, like the rest of, or, the department, the rest of the city does. So that is an item for discussion. You see no dollar amounts there, because we're talking about it. It would have a fiscal impact if we moved that direction, but we don't have a number to put on it now, so it's more for discussion at this point. Same thing with the, number 17, the CPSM recommendations. Obviously, we've had much discussion about those recommendations, and we wanted that there, again, as a placeholder, so that if direction were given by council to pursue a specific or a number of specific recommendations, and there was a fiscal impact, that we recognize that and fund it appropriately. I don't want to suggest that we're not doing anything regarding those recommendations, because we are. Coming out of that meeting, there's a number of things that we're moving forward. Met with the union representatives this week, and discussed strategic planning, put a framework in place to move that strategic planning process forward. My feedback from that meeting was very positive, and I think we're on a good path to address that. We also have a meeting scheduled with us, the city representatives, including our PD and dispatch, and REMZA, to talk about dispatch. I believe the county and Sparks are also going to send representatives to that meeting. That is scheduled for, I believe, the end of next week. And the third thing, the airport. I have been in touch with the airport. We have a modified cooperative aid agreement that we're discussing, also been in touch with the union representatives, to make sure that we sit down with them, discuss their concerns, and I think a lot of their concerns have to do with safety and training, so we're going to sit down with them and discuss those issues. So we're moving forward on all those fronts, but they don't translate into dollars, so that's why, or at least at this point, they don't translate into dollars, so that's why you see no dollar amount associated with that. And then finally, number 18, again, the presentation that Debbie gave, talked about severance. The additional ask that we have there is based on a five-year rolling average. We're at about $550,000 per year in severance pay. We know that we're going to, that about 15 people per year are going to retire for one reason or another. We don't know exactly who, we don't know exactly when, but that five-year rolling average pans out to about $550,000 a year that we need in severance payouts. Right now, we're funded at $300,000, so that is where the additional $245,000 comes from. And I'd just like to talk briefly about the fire that we had this morning. Again, the crews out there did an amazing job. Truck three was on their way to a lift assist, which is a non-emergent call, so they were actually out on the road, saw the column go up, diverted from the non-emergent call to the Southwest Village Apartments, which is right south of the Pepper Mill there, if you're familiar with that area. When they got there, there were literally people hanging off the third floor, the third story, smoking fire, blowing out the windows of two apartments. Engine three, or Truck Three immediately went into rescue mode, rescued two people from the third floor. At the same time, Engine Three initiated fire attack, aggressive internal fire attack, knocked that fire down, were able to rescue everybody threatened, put the fire out, no injuries to firefighters or civilians. So again, the men and women on the street just did an amazing job, and I'd like to offer my kudos to them. That took 12 apparatus and over 50 personnel on scene. So that's the kind of response that we can generate, but that's the kind of results that you get. You put that fire out, nobody's injured, there's going to be people displaced, and I think it was Councilwoman Jordan had a question about how we handled that on scene, and that's why I also wanted to bring up this incident, because perfect example, early in the incident, we notified Red Cross, said, we're going to need you out here, get them rolling. We have a chaplain, our own chaplain, he responded as well. So ball's already rolling, to get displaced people, someplace to stay, clothes if they need them, food, all those type of things. So we take care of that, like I said. The fire wasn't out yet, and we already have those mechanisms moving forward. So with that, I will take any questions. We don't need that.
All right, Chief, thank you so much. I really appreciate that it sounds like, you know, everyone's now kind of on the same page.
Yeah.
Between the same language. I think that's great.
I think we're moving forward in a positive direction, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you, I'm really happy to hear that, that makes me very pleased. How many people were displaced this morning?
We didn't get a head count, but 12 apartments were affected, and there may actually be more, because the problem with this building is, there's one gas feed to it, so even if it's not an affected apartment, when they shut off the gas, they shut it off to the whole building.
Okay.
So that would prevent them from, at least temporarily, from living in their apartment.
And who is it that we work with over at Red Cross? Is there a specific person? I know who we work with through our office, but maybe you guys have a different contact?
I don't, I don't have a name, and I'm thinking of the person that I used to contact, and Zanny, and I don't think she's there anymore.
Right.
We just request Red Cross through dispatch, and so they need the contact.
Because they have done a tremendous job, thank goodness for them.
They do do a tremendous job. And I know, right before I came down here, Chief Layton was in contact with them, they're trying to pin down locations, tried to get a good head count in terms of how many people need help and what kind of help they need, because not everybody needs the same, obviously. A couple apartments are just uninhabitable, and they will be for a long time. Others probably just need a place for a night or two.
Great. Well, thank you, I really appreciate it. Any questions, starting with Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for that presentation, and thank you, everyone, for this horrible incident today. Seems like we have too many of our multifamily structures and motel structures with these occurrences. It is concerning, and hopefully, our motel inspection program will, you know, help us alleviate some of them, but this was obviously a multifamily. But yeah, good job, everyone. I do have questions about your chart of asks, and some of these might be from Ms. Lochner. So when we see these with these departments, these are things that are not in the budget you're building, correct?
That is correct. What we have currently done is just taken a base budget and rolled it up.
Okay.
And then we have not discussed with the city manager, we're having these meetings, and then we will meet with the city manager to determine what we are going to add in as the city manager's recommended budget that would come back forward to council in May.
Okay, on the roll-up. Well, I guess, you know, here's, here's something, is, for me, past experience and history is always an indicator of the future, and it appears to me that on item, and maybe I'm not understanding, item seven, the payouts, item [makes sound effect], 18, the severance, and item five, those are what we've been doing augmentations for, right? Aren't we doing, or you had an item on the council meeting last week, telling us we need a budget for these, right?
Yes, I did. We had the discussion last week to explain to the council that this continues to be an area of concern. It is not funded adequately in either of our safety services, and going forward, the recommendation from the finance department is that we provide that infrastructure, so as we add in the future additional staff, we're not hampering the operation, because they don't have adequate support budget for that staff. So there are actually, I believe, four items on their request. There's the overtime callback, there's the payouts under item number five, number seven, and then the severance is in number 18. So there's several things here that are put in place to try to address those shortfalls in the budget, that we do augment every year to, to help both safety services in these areas.
Yeah, and that's obviously pushing up against his number-one priority, which is just, you know, more personnel, and, and I get that, you know, as liaison to the Civil Service Commission, I do know that sometimes those weights for when someone goes out the door through the salary savings, and I'll share it to the council, because I think I'm the only one here who's been liaison to the Civil Service Commission, is those weights do hold the promotion path, and I think that's kind of a problem. I really do think we need to get away from that. I don't think it's the best personnel management practice, frankly. I think when someone needs, goes out the door, whatever is owed to them under, you know, the agreements we've made, we need to be able to have some metric to get them there, get them out, and open up that position and move them on. I think that's very positive to just managing the organization. A couple other questions, and, but I can go around again. I have questions on non, those, not, some of the other items on here.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are the speakers working?
No.
No, they're not?
No.
Well, I can hear you, but I think when you push it, am I right? Is it not working? They are?
No. No.
Niomas is not working?
Niomas is not working.
I got my.
But everybody else's, I believe, is working.
Okay. Then I'm going to go to Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you.
And you want to go next?
I got my manual way of doing it. There's not one here, there's no one here.
Okay, give us another.
Okay, thank you. I did want to ask, and you know what I'm going to ask.
Yeah.
Okay, so Station 19, my understanding from some conversations we had previously was the hope that it would be open with a full crew in 2020, is what I thought I remembered previously, you saying on the record, but then I heard some hesitation, so can you tell me where we are with Station 19?
Absolutely, and thank you for the opportunity to bring that up, to clarify, because we have talked about it, and my hope is to get those additional eight people that would justify upstaffing. We can do it with overtime. My concern there is that it's over, it's additional overtime, there, people are putting in a lot of hours, and that, it's a burden. I think the firefighters, some of them are here today, they would tell you that, you know, they're, they're a little burned out, if you will, on working overtime. My hope, and I think maybe I didn't articulate it, but in my head, thinking, if we can get those eight additional bodies this year, that would allow us to open 19.
I will, just as, obviously, this is my ward, and we got creative with the two-person crew to, you know, as I call it, that was the crawl before we could walk, before we could run. I will say that the residents of Somerset, who are not in some far-flung community that hasn't been in existence, they need and deserve a fully-staffed station, and this isn't talking about our growth, this isn't talking about new development in the outskirts, this is talking about tax-paying, existing neighborhoods that have paid for and deserve full staffing. So whatever that looks like in the short term or the long term, we need to figure a way to get there, and I mean, we keep hearing about how there's no money, I don't know how we're going to get to eight additional people, I just know that the residents of Somerset deserve, and rightfully so, deserve this station to be open at full capacity.
I understand.
Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, when we just talked this week, on number nine, the personal, personnel protective equipment, did we not talk about a five-year program?
We were talking about a three-year program. So last year, this year, and next year would get us.
Get us in the right cycle.
Basically ahead of the game, and then with the existing funding that we already have, so this additional $150,000 would get us, we are caught up, we will stay caught up, and then the funding that's already in our budget, which I believe is $50,000 a year, would keep us caught up going forward from there.
Okay.
So that would be, this would be the middle year.
For some reason, I thought it was a five-year, but I don't have my notes in front of me, so.
I know that it's a three-year plan, I don't think we talked about anything else that might have been a five-year, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Doerr, I don't know if you want to add anything, if you do, just let me know.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, you know, thank you for this comprehensive presentation. I just wanted to reiterate, for the benefit of all, that we talked on Tuesday and a little bit on Wednesday about the possibility. bit on Wednesday about the possibility of a, either an advisory question on a public safety ballot, or a public safety ballot initiative. So I just wanted to say, I think those are on the table still and we need to get some input from our staff on what the various options are and what those would look like and what it would ultimately be able to help us provide, either in term of equipment, staffing, turnout, you know, added in with the police needs. We saw 28 positions there. We just heard the discussion on the homeless situation. So I think we may be at the point where we have to do something fairly significant. So I just wanted to put that back on the table and make sure our staff are doing the research that we need to find out if these are even viable options. Thanks.
Chief, thanks for, for all the hard work that goes into this. I guess I want to first direct, the first question I have to Ms. Lochner, because I'm not sure I understood, five, seven, and 18 are essentially all unfunded liabilities and those amount to $850,000, is that correct?
So those, yes, those three items are currently part of the contract, but not specifically funded in the department, so they typically-
And they're not funded because we don't know when a person might retire or use the cash out? I don't understand.
No, we just have not added to their budget for those things. We've added to their budget for staffing, but the staffing needs this kind of support in order for us not to have to hold a position open to cover costs of these items when people leave.
And so currently, though, when someone does leave and we have a major payout, it's either done through an augmentation of their budget or through salary vacancy savings, is that correct?
Or through a reduction in services and supplies, or through holding another position vacant, because that's a critical position for the department. This year, there have been in both safety services, a significant amount of severance pays beyond what they can actually absorb. Over the past two years that I've been here, they've been able to absorb those mostly. But we have always had to augment at the end of the year to, to make sure they don't go over budget.
And so I, I guess I want to ask two related questions. One is, what do we anticipate your retirements or payouts will be in the next fiscal year? I mean, do we have an idea? As I understand it, there are a massive number of generational turnover about to hit. And that's not in your department only, that's nationwide.
It's throughout the entire organization, yes.
Right. And so if we're going to be facing that, we need to have a plan for that, because I don't want to see vacant positions held open that are critical to the safety of this community, simply because we don't have the funds to pay for the payout. So help me understand what we're projecting, what we should anticipate, so that we can plan for it.
So we did a report on personnel with 25 years or more, you know, basically, we rounded up 24 and such and change.
People who want to or could be eligible for that-
Exactly. That's kind of the target audience, right? They're, they can, whenever they want to go, they can go. Total payout as of 2/20, so as of about three weeks ago, $1.1 million for that group.
And just to remind the council, we have $300,000 in their budget for severance. We have determined, you know, again, they've asked for an additional $245,000 to cover what happens on a regular, normal basis, but like you said, we're going through a couple extraordinary years right now where some of our long-term employees are retiring. And so the issue is much bigger than just getting them back up to the normal budget. But getting them to a normal budget would help for the long term.
I'm just finding it hard to understand how we can prioritize those lower than, I get that more firefighters is the critical need, but a, an existing employee and our commitment to that existing employee has to come before a new employee, in my mind. So I'm trying to figure out, the priority is at five, seven, and 18, but you're suggesting to me that we can do both because we can, what, fund it at this level?
So regardless of what we've put in their budget, when people leave the city, we have to cover their payout. So we look throughout the whole organization to, and so we have been, you know, sometimes we have additional revenue, which is what we will use to augment in the next augmentation for the safety services, for their overtime and severance. But when we build our budget, we want to make sure we maintain a conservative look at our revenues until such time as we have documentation proof that they're coming in greater than what the state projected, what we projected. So we start with, with where we are and then we look at their services. We, we manage them throughout the year. Both, both police and fire have had this as a long-term structural issue within their budget. We know the entire general fund has structural issues in every department. This is one that has come to light more recently because, like you said, we are having some of our longer-term employees retire and it's really causing an operational deficiency in both those departments. We're looking to have council support on the coming year while both departments have asked for new people. The, we still continue to think we need to provide the, the infrastructure in their budget to support those people first.
Okay. I have a second question, but I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Breckus, who I think has been waiting patiently. Thank you for the answer, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, to continue that thought, would you carry those within each budget or would you put it into HR or somewhere else?
So for the rest of the city, those severance budget, it lives in the non-departmental area.
Okay.
And so, and, and we look at targeting those dollars to positions that are critical to the operations. Within the safety services, they each have a severance budget. My recommendation would be that we, we look at our severances entirely in the non-departmental and move it when people leave. But we know that budget's not adequate to cover, you know, what's out there now, let alone the safety services.
Okay, so five, seven, and 18 would live in the fire budget if we went with that?
For now.
Okay, yeah. And I think that's, I think that's the best practice. And then also it leaves them to not have to short their services and supplies, because that's where it hits other things. And that's where I want to ask now, next. You know, when I was on the CDBG committee, I think it was my idea, and I was, I thought it was, you know, I was really happy that we were able to move there and get an apparatus through that funding source. And now we went with the dead instrument, but, and then Chief was able to get one through grant through the Pennington, which I think was kind of a whimsical thing. But the CDBG, and I don't sit on that subcommittee anymore, any longer, but number 12, the replacement for the breathing apparatus, and number nine for the turnouts, you know, to the degree that those are needed for these fire responses, which are generally these old multifamilies in the CDBG-eligible areas, have we had discussion about eligibility for CDBG for those two? I know Ms. Cochran, no relation, is an expert on that area and I just, I left that committee last year. Have you looked at, over there for that?
Yes, and I think I would defer to Monica, but I, I think the answer is going to be it's not eligible, because you're looking at equipment that we use department-wide. And department-wide-
Yeah.
Citywide, we are not CDBG-eligible.
Yeah. Okay, I was wondering if, if, you know, because I know the map, I've had the map in my head, this, this area, which today, Yori Grove area, or the one on West Forest, certainly in my ward, if you was able to do, and I've done that documentation as a CDBG administrator myself, if you were able to show you're going to this geography, then you can parse it out, possibly?
Yeah, possibly. And certainly, we could look at the stations that are in those eligible areas and maybe get part of it that way.
Yeah, yeah.
So last year, the $150,000 for their personal protective equipment came out of room tax, the council's room tax fund.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So we did-
Yeah, yeah.
Give them $150,000 out of that funding source last year.
Yeah.
When we hired, when we did apparatus in, out of CDBG, it kind of became problematic for the department. Again, you need to use them in just those areas. And operationally, they need to be able to have the flexibility to move things throughout the entire city. So it becomes problematic when you start using CDBG funds, but the room tax funds we can certainly use.
Sure, sure. It's just, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, we'll get to CDBG, but sometimes when you put so much over on construction, it's hard for Public Works to get that much construction. Then, you know, HUD gets unhappy that you're not spending money, you got carryover. And we also, I think, had some CDBG return over from something, a land sale recently, so we've got some program income. I don't know, I think it's a source, based upon my knowledge, and, and we've got a lot of, you know, a lot of demands. Now, the last one, I want to talk about pulling off of what, oh, but I can, we can do another go-around.
I think Councilmember Weber is next.
Okay, then I'd like to talk.
Thank you. On, on the severance pay, I was looking at the difference between the items seven, 18, seven, five, seven, and 18, I think you said? Is it five, seven? Yeah, five, seven, and 18.
Yes.
But specifically on the severance pay, and I was comparing that with the police and they're not requesting the same, they're not requesting severance as an additional. How, how are those different?
If I may, there's contractual differences there-
Okay.
-in, in police. And at some point in the past, their contract changed to kind of limit those payouts. Those people that were in the previous, that previous group are working their way through their career and are still retiring. But over time, we will see that drop. So I think, I think last I heard, we were close to, to that cadre of people kind of going through their careers and retiring. Last year, we, I believe, spent $800,000 or $900,000 in severances in the police department. So that was kind of the last big wave, I hope, anyway. But I would defer to Ms. Lochner if she has anything else to add.
And we continue to work with those departments as they hear things or something comes up. They, we're trying to get the information sooner rather than later so that we can help plan for those, so that we're not hampering the operations and we're not, you know, holding positions open, because that's not an ideal situation.
Well, it just seems to me that when we're talking about, now we're talking about one, one million so far, 1,100,000. And this is an ongoing, as you've mentioned, that it, you're pretty much knowing that it's at least, didn't you say something about 550,000?
Rolling average, about 550,000 a year. And again, about 15 people comprise that or make up the retirees.
Right, right. There's got to be some way that we can, knowing that it's, it's an ongoing thing, that, and maybe with all of our different employees, associations, that we, we have to have some control of this. And I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm glad that we're talking about it, because it really is something that's very, it's hard to try to bring on more employees when we have to take care of those and we need to take care of those as a number one priority. So I, I hope to hear more discussion about this.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may?
Madam Manager.
There are, there are some different ways to treat this. I know the city of Las Vegas sets aside, they make the severance line item for the whole city a function of their overall payroll. So for every payroll that they process, they set aside a certain portion, I believe it's 15%. That's a lot of money, right? And, and I don't know that the city of Reno is fiscally in, in a place where we could do that kind of functionality, but that is one option to, to build up a fund that would work citywide. The other thing that I would note, not related to severances, but just the way that the fire department functions, is that because there's the, the academies, you, you have a certain number of vacancies that compile and then you send them through the academy. Then you have more vacancies that compile and you send them through the academy. I'm probably going to get daggers headed my way here, but one way to deal with that is lateral, laterals coming across with a truncated academy to get people through. But that is another struggle that we have with just keeping full staff in the fire department.
I, I think too, I, I don't want to belabor this point, but I don't understand the staffing, overtime, and callback. It's $1,138,000. If we have more firefighters, will call time and, callback and overtime go down?
I think Debbie has spoken to that. It will certainly go down. I don't think it will ever eliminate it. But if you have more FTEs, assuming that you don't increase staffing, you know, if we're adding staff, adding FTEs, but we're also up-staffing, we're not releasing the demand.
Well, no agency can get to zero, right?
Exactly.
With overtime, it just doesn't happen. That, that's not what I'm asking. But if we allocate more resources to full-time employees, this number has got to go down. We cannot do both, I don't think. And ultimately, the goal would be to find some way to, I mean, in my mind, you've got line item one, which says eight firefighters, costs us in fiscal year '21, a million dollars. And you've got staffer and overtime and callback of another million dollars. So why can't I find a way to give you 16 firefighters in order to eliminate this million? There's similar numbers, I'm only just trying to compare apples to apples. How do we get to a point where we're not paying a million dollars in overtime and callback?
Well, and let me make sure I'm clear on the, on the point. When we add people, when we add bodies, you're right, that, that will fill vacancies that might otherwise have been filled by overtime. But if we are using those vacancies, for example, to staff Engine 19, we haven't done anything to fill the overtime with those bodies, we're using those in a different spot. And that's why the overtime is not necessarily affected just by adding bodies.
I guess, Chief, we're all at a difficult moment and you've been here for all the days that we've had these budget meetings, right? And so Councilmember Jordan, I think, was very keen about pointing out the sort of structural imbalance that we find ourselves in. And I don't know if in this fiscal year and in this budget year, we're going to fix everything. We're going to do everything we can to fix as much as we can. But we have just structural issues that are at play. And all of us, and I think Ms. Lochner is really putting us on a path to resolve what we can resolve here in this building, but I'm not sure we're going to be able to fix the larger lift. And until that happens, I don't know how we can make you whole. Because my, at the end of the day, your men and women who are working for your department are responding to an enormous amount of calls. It just, it boggles the mind. We're doing it with less. We obviously have made some commitments to you last year with the FTEs that we approved, with the grant that you were able to go out and get, the fire apparatus replacement. I just don't know where we're going to find more opportunities to do that. And your budget is realistic, I think it's fair. You have asked for the things that you needed. I don't see a lot of fluff in here. I just don't know where, where we on this side of the dais are going to come up with it. And so that will be our task as we move forward. And I think Councilmember Doer also is thinking critically about this issue. I don't know, Councilmember Doer, are you on the phone and do you want to participate at all? I, I am apologizing because we can't see you and don't want to miss you if there's comments you want to make.
Yeah, I'm here and I just, you know, I just tried to get my piece out early just to say that, you know, there are large needs in all of our public safety outfits, including dispatch. And, and obviously, we're talking about fire here. And I really think, given the fact that even if the legislature takes some action to address the issues with property tax and our declining revenue base, that, that will be several years out. That would have to be two actions and a change to our constitution. So I, I think that's at least five years out and we have needs now. And so I'm, I know it's tough to be talking about something like this. So that's why I'm pretty interested in getting the input from the, from our residents in terms of whether we go out and do some polling, you know, independent polling, or whether we go forward with an advisory question. Either one, I think, would help us kind of come to grips with how to best address this structural deficit. Thanks.
If I could add one comment, and I wanted to thank you, because I truly appreciate your comments, Councilman Reese, the recognition that this is our realistic needs for us. And Debbie and I have had very candid discussions. She is the finest director and she's very strongly advocating what is best for finance. And on the other hand, of course, I'm advocating what's best for the fire department. what's best for the fire department. And you seven have the enviable task of deciding between the two, so.
I appreciate that. Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, and you've got a new, you know, crackpuck analyst on there, and work with Ms. Lochner's team, I think that when the departments come through of one through eighteen, maybe the solution, if there are, is to be something, is a modification of some, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of, you know, some of seventeen, some of five, you know, one, if it's advisable, you know, I don't know. I mean, I think that's what, you're hearing what we're saying, you roll back. Eighteen request is really a big, elaborate one, but I think it reflects the need of the underfunding of the budget. And, you know, it's just a reflection of how deep those cuts were. I was an employee here from 1998 to 2009, and I wasn't in the capacity of looking at budget that closely, but I sat through a lot of budget hearings, and it was a completely different world when you get into this level of detail on the departments. It really, really was. I know that definitively. So, anyway, but I don't want to lose thought of what Ms. Dewar's somewhat mentioning and the importance that I mentioned in the first day of the CIP budget. I am going to be talking to my NAB tonight and mentioning to them things that I feel need to get on the queue. And they'll, and I have no illusion that they won't be on the queue, some of these major infrastructure projects, long after I'm gone from the city, you know, a bridge or something. But if they're not on the queue and in that book, you know, they don't exist, and someone who's got a ranch out in, you know, Cold Springs, they'll get on the queue because they've got a lot of motivated interest. But I think in terms of the fire department's need, I think we really do need to make sure the fire station is on there, particularly, and in a robust discussion. Particularly, if we have someone going off and talking about, you know, all these needs and, you know, revenue source or whatever, we need to have a very good CIP that talks about the old station, that has every station detailed to where they are, particularly the temporary ones. And I want to be very clear about the temporary ones, because I'm troubled, I'm tremendously troubled this year about the temporary one that I think puts the department in a difficult operational condition when they are maneuvering around and having to use the street for their maneuvers. Because I was in Old Station, and I knew Old Station had a lot of land for them to do what they needed to do, and they've been having, put in a short position on these temporary stations, which are now permanent. So I will be looking to the CIP and seeing how we book that. And maybe the old station is a multi-year, somewhat schematic. And I think that's going to be a pretty critical component when we get talking on the revenue side also, when we have our revenue meeting.
Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. Chief, when we talked about hoping to get Station 19 fully staffed, that was, was that, that was last year?
Last year.
It was last year. That was
It was early last year.
Prior to the grant, as I recall.
Correct.
Okay. So how many people did we get through the grant?
Eight.
So how come we can't open Station 19?
We opened, we upstaffed seven. We went from Rescue Seven to Engine Seven. We added the two bodies there, and that's what we'd be looking at, doing, adding two more bodies to nineteen to go from Rescue Nineteen to Engine Nineteen.
Okay. Because, okay, maybe I'm misunderstanding the conversation, that it was Station Nineteen was projected to hopefully be open in 2020 before we got the new, I get that you put those new folks at another station. It seems like we added bodies, but we still can't get to nineteen.
I think the conversation was nineteen, after we got enough to increase the staffing at seven, we would then go move to nineteen. The additional bodies allowed us to do that at seven, and now we're looking for either, like I said, we can do it with the bodies we have with overtime, or what I would prefer to do is add the additional bodies and then upstaff at that point.
Thank you.
Chief, I don't think we have additional questions. I'm going to look to my colleagues, but we have work to do ahead of us. And I guess in the end, I want you to know that this council supports your department, the men and women of it, the work that you're doing. We need to give you the tools to be successful. I know sometimes it appears that we're being critical from this perspective, from this side going that way. I think we're all working in the service of this community. I think everyone has a goal of making sure that people know and observe that your fire department is awesome, and they are doing the work. And I know it's cliche, but you're doing more with less. Give us the opportunity, and it may not be in one swing, to help make it better for your men and women. And we'll be, you know, we may be five years into this project. I don't know how long it's going to take. Some of it has to do with the other ideas that have been brought. I know that there have been discussions about whether or not the Building Enterprise Fund is a place where we can find opportunities to plug some of the gaps and the holes that we have. And again, these are large questions, ones that I am happy that you're at the table to have, and I thank you for your service and the work that you're doing.
I understand. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Ms. Lochner, remind me where we are then. Oh, yeah, because we went through one of these, Community Development is next. Okay, give me a second just to get reset. Okay, I think we're ready.
Good morning, council members. Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. Thank you for having me here today. Just on the front end, I wanted to mention a couple things. This is my first time through the budget cycle as director. I landed at this job right as, about this time last year, as you were going through it and inherited that budget request. Two things I want to emphasize. First is I've been incredibly impressed with the team at Community Development, and really how much they do with limited resources. It's just a great crew we have on Floor Two and Floor Six. Second thing I wanted to emphasize is we've been hearing you. The budget is difficult. There's not enough money to go around, and public safety is a priority. So we've really crafted our budget request with that in mind, focusing on trying to be more efficient and doing more with the resources we have. Our department's organized, we have about seventy-six full-time employees. We have Housing and Neighborhood Development. We have Business Licensing, Planning, Engineering. We have our Administrative Services. Kelly Wilsey is here with me. She did the heavy lift here on the budget. And Building and Safety, which is about half of our staff. Core functions, Building and Engineering, first and foremost. All the projects that come through and ultimately generate the revenue to pay for all the services and personnel that we've been discussing the last few days, that all comes through Building and Engineering. We've been pretty startled with the volume coming through this year. For the first time ever, we're looking at $10 billion of valuation that we're processing this year. We're on track, actually, for closer to $11 billion. For context, year over year, that's over a 50% increase in valuation. So we're, the caseload and the business that we're doing is really quite incredible this year. Business licensing is our second function. All the businesses in the community, that's a significant revenue generator for the city. Housing and Neighborhood Development, another city council priority, whether it's affordable housing or homeless services. Our community planning process, something I've been pretty closely involved in. And then our Program and Service Management, essentially the administrative side. Top accomplishments, again, we've really been focusing on efficiency and knowing that we're not going to get some massive pile of funding. Our staffing levels are roughly half what many of our peer communities and other places have. When we look at Boise or Salt Lake City or even Southern Nevada, really the only place we've been able to see that operates at staffing levels like us is the city of Sparks. Marshall County is at about double what we have. But Sparks has a very streamlined development review process, and that's something we're looking forward to improving our efficiencies. So for our top accomplishments, we're very proud that after many years of work, we've been able to implement electronic permit review. That's, you're going to see in our budget request. We want to enhance that. Essentially, what we have now is step one of electronic permit review, but it still requires significant staffing to work. Our top priority in our budget request is going to be to take it to the next level, so it's a fully automated system. We think we can achieve savings in excess of what that cost will be. Second top accomplishment is becoming the Continuum of Care Lead and finalizing the Regional Area Alliance for Homeless Strategic Plan. That has really been done with heavy assistance from the city manager's office, Sabre and Bill. I've been kind of integrating in a lot of the rest of the functions of community development, so I may, if there are detailed questions on that, call on Bill to help me out there. And then the Title 18 update process, which we had a special meeting on not too long ago. We're probably 90% of the way through that process and looking forward to adoption. We think the efficiencies in that update process should save us at least one full-time equivalent of staff time, just going into the cost of dysfunction, I guess, related to our current code. It's very cumbersome, both for users and for staff. So we're very proud of those accomplishments. We've obviously been working on a lot of other things as well, but those are our top three we picked. Moving forward, top priorities, prepare and implement the Homeless Service Transition Plan with regional partners. A lot of discussion of that. We want to kick off essentially Phase Two of the code update process with neighborhood engagement, zoning outreach, really looking at the zoning maps as a key strategy to enhance housing affordability, and look at land use changes in conjunction with the neighborhoods and the areas affected. Also, as part of that, start working on enhanced public facility planning, whether it's water planning or recreation planning, things of that nature. And the third major initiative is to enhance our ACELA system. This is our computerized system that tracks building permits, business licensing, and a whole bunch of other things. It could work better and help us achieve efficiencies throughout the department and really throughout the whole city. And that's going to be our top budget request moving forward. This is our general fund budget. We're funded roughly three quarters from Building Enterprise Fund and roughly one quarter from the general fund. When you see this $3 million total annual budget, think of that in context of the $10 billion of valuation that we're processing. So for every $1,000 of development that comes through the door, we have 30 cents out of the general fund to process that. We're essentially flat during business as usual. Salaries and wages increased with cost of living like everyone else, but we had some savings in our salaries and benefits and services and supplies and one-time expenses that we're not proposing to carry forward, including the code update. So you see, it's a 0.4% business as usual change, significantly less than the rate of inflation. So here's our asks. I probably should have been smarter and broke this into fewer categories because there are some related items. Overall, it's very focused on not increasing staffing, where we don't have an absolute critical need to do that. And the lion's share of the request is coming out of the Building Enterprise Fund. We did get a unanimous vote to recommend approval of those expenditures from the Building Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. Our top priority, I mentioned earlier, is enhancing our ACELA system. It really is not working to the way it should work, and it's been a real frustration. It's costing us one to two full-time equivalent positions, essentially dealing with what's not working with ACELA. What we're recommending is to hire an ACELA expert under contract for a two-year period of time to get us up to what it should be. So that's item one. And then item two, closely related, our top priority would be to add a management analyst to help work on that. As an alternative, we put in there item two B, that would be an either or, that if council does not want to add that position, we would request an up in the contract amount to help with that. But really, we think, in the interest of doing more with less, getting our automated services up to what they can do, and they do do in many other communities, will result in ongoing savings that far exceed the cost of these expenditures here. Kind of the second category of requests, by the way, the general fund, basically everything we do is funded through some combination of general fund and Building Enterprise Fund. So this first list, one through 10, are the shared expenses. And then the bottom list, one through nine, are strictly Building Enterprise Fund. Items three through 10 are really focusing on enhancing our expertise, more than enhancing the number of staff. Our team, especially in the planning side and some of the other functions, deal with incredibly complex issues that can be very polarizing. Usually, the full house at council meetings involves some type of development proposal. And we've found that really high-level planners in particular, and other professionals, are what is most needed at this point. So we are not requesting additional staff. Out of those requests, three through 10, we have two reclassification requests to be able to recruit top-notch people and retain top-notch people in those positions. We do have one retirement severance payout. I was, learned this year that that's handled through budget requests, not through some long-term system. Looking at increasing our intern program, where we think we can get some real value, both for the students and for the city. We have a reclassification in Engineering, so we have more of a path for advancement and succession. Conference room upgrades, so we can use modern technology there. And reclassing our planning manager to a deputy director position. We're very fortunate to be able to get one of the top planners in the region to join our team. Had to bring her in near the top of the range, and we'd very much like to keep her here. And then we have two part-time assistant positions to help, one in planning and one in licensing. We're looking at that as an alternative to additional staff, as it's not an ongoing expense, but it could help fill some of the gaps in some of the less complex functions. So that's really what we have for our requests that involve the general fund. The total general fund request is under $200,000 for the year. Moving on to Building Enterprise Fund, you know, our building team, really, there aren't a lot of efficiencies to find there. They're doing quite well. And I mentioned before that we've experienced over 50% increase in valuation year over year, and over a 10-year period, it's over 600% increase. So the ebbs and flows of workload that come with growth and lack of growth in a community, we're more volatile. You know, the buildings, when they come in in a big boom time, the permits are coming in like crazy. And really, that's what we've been dealing with all year, and I've been very proud that everyone's been able to keep up with it. But ultimately, it's not sustainable. A lot of our people are working double duty. We don't get overtime, but a lot of people are working more than their allotted hours. And out of the Building Enterprise Fund, we are requesting a total of three positions, including the one position Chief Cochran mentioned for fire. That would be in the form of a senior engineering tech to do the stormwater basin inspection program that we have initiated and have underway with existing staff, but we really aren't staffed up to do that in a broad scale. We're requesting a new building inspector, a vehicle. We have a reclassification request, an intern request, and then one more development permit technician. Those are the folks at the front counter who take in the permits, do the processing, run the customer interface, and then the fire inspector. And then the ESRI, GIS Enterprise is under the Information Technology Request. So as a whole, our general fund request is about 5%, again, recognizing that our caseload is going up 50%, and our enterprise fund request is about 10%. And that's basically the summary of what I have. Appreciate your time today. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Great presentation. The only thing I would say is, next time, can you make that a little bit bigger?
Tell me about it.
Yeah, it's hard to see. It's getting worse. Anyway, great job, Arlo. All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah. Thanks for the presentation. So the valuations should hit our property tax soon.
Yes.
And I met with the, you know, ran into the assessor a couple months ago, and he said, you know, the logistics buildings, and we probably have about 14 million square feet going on up in the North Valleys. I don't know what was happened to the million-square-foot request last night. You know, do kick off. But a lot of this boom is coming, I think, with some other work challenges that maybe aren't reflected in your department. That is, you know, the appeals we hear. That is, you know, the appeals we hear a lot when we go off to RTC or Tamoa, the public, you know, queuing up the public infrastructure decisions to perfect that, the time we spend defending, you know, lawsuits for this or that, or the big investments we have to make at the sewer treatment plant. And I feel like the steps of implementing the master plan are not being taken, and I didn't hear a lot about that. And that's really my priority, because we're building great places, we're building great neighborhoods, we're working for all in a community. And I think that, you know, permitting process in Acela and all that is operational, but your department has such a manifold directive to help us, you know, very comprehensively knit together all of the other functions that are needed for the growth and the reinvestment to make sure that our older areas aren't falling behind, and then also response to the building activity in whatever part of a cycle we're in. So that's, you know, kind of a comment that I see a little short on that other end. Unfortunately, I don't, you know, I'm curious, and maybe that's more strategic plan, where are we at on an annexation program? Tonight, there's going to be a large-scale annexation request coming into Minab, probably take up a whole lot of time at Minab tonight. It's not even in Ward 1, it's in Ward 2, but we noticed both. And we don't have an annexation program to examine if that's something we should, we should be looking at. So that's, that's somewhat of an issue. I've had discussions with the manager on maybe splitting up this department a little bit, and obviously now she's, she's leaving, but I think the council should look strongly at the functions here because it has a lot of catch-all functions. You know, the outcomes are, we're still not doing well with housing, we're not bringing on enough units that we really need. And, and then, you know, we are doing well with our federal programs. I think we manage those absolutely well and very efficiently. So I think, I don't know, you know, but, but I really want to focus on this department on the fiscal. And that is that I think that it is time to take the Building Enterprise Fund and roll it into the general, general fund. And there was a memo maybe four years ago that outlined how that would occur. Then the functions go on to general fund, this department has to be carried, but I think that it would alleviate some movement for us in the general fund, which is where we need it the most. And I, you know, I'll say again, I don't understand why Save Mart's business license or the woman who cleans houses, her business license from her home, go into the general fund to support police and fire and parks, but the track building developer who pulls a single-family building permit, or me who pulled a permit for my home two weeks ago, that goes into this lockbox to isolate and keep remodeling floors or so on. I think that there's just not a parity. It is a policy decision that goes to this body, and I think in these tough fiscal times, we need to be looking at all revenue on the table, particularly if we're in the mood of telling the property owners or the, telling the public that we want to hit them with taxes. And so I think it's time to queue that up and even, you know, maybe we need a half-year budget transition to get there, but I think that'll be a discussion for our revenue side of the House.
Councilman Reese.
Thanks, Mayor, for letting me talk over an hour, a little bit. Thanks.
Mr. Takam, I guess I want to understand just a little bit more, and a very pointy question, not a broad structural question, but the Acela program. What's going on? Why doesn't it work? Why doesn't it work as well as we want it to work? I just need to know more about it.
It's, it's a complex computer program. So, and I'm not the computer expert, and quite frankly, no one here is an expert in Acela.
What are you doing with it to kind of band-aid it?
I don't think Acela is an expert in Acela.
Right. I mean--
There are, there are communities, though, that, that, many, many communities, that they use Acela much more, in a much more advanced way than we do. What is working are the basic functions. You put the permits in there, you put the licenses in there, it keeps track of where it is in the review process. But in terms of the reporting out and kind of the automation, and specifically on electronic permit review, our real challenge here, it's just become the roadblock to get electronic permit review to be the efficiency that we, that everyone wants it to be. The way it works right now under our current Acela, and we've basically just run into a roadblock, we've been working all year to get through it. Someone submits a permit electronically. A fully functioning Acela system does all the behind-the-scenes work. Staff doesn't have to process it. It logs it in, it enters it and roots it and all that type of stuff. We're not able to do that. So when someone submits a permit electronically, it saves paper, but basically the staffing's the same. We have to have a staff member go in and essentially accept the application, confirm, send it back. There's a whole series of back and forth with the applicant that costs the applicant money, it costs us money. And our goal is to get it to the next level that some other jurisdictions have, where essentially it's an automated system. And that's what would allow us to essentially save a full-time or two full-time positions if, if the computer software was able to do that. So that's why it's the number-one priority. It's boring as can be, you know, who wants to put a bunch of money into computers? But we're pretty convinced that it will save at least as much money over a short period of time.
Okay. I appreciate that. My second question really is, I guess, a broader one. I need to know more about your opinion, specifically about the BFAC sort of being drained into the general fund, or maybe that's not the way to put it, but just, I need to understand what your take on that issue is.
Yes, it's a complex issue. We may have a future meeting on it. The first thing is there are statutory frameworks, so there are limitations in terms of what we can do and can't do. I'd say there's probably pros and cons of doing each. The one thing that concerns us a little bit about dissolving the Building Enterprise Fund at this point in the economic cycle, when you think about it, development permitting, it's really boom and bust. It's the most volatile of revenue sources. When it's a recession, it goes basically to zero. And when it's a boom time, you build up a substantial surplus, like we're seeing now. That's a necessary function of the, a system like this. Otherwise, if you get close to fully spending what you're generating in years like this, you're essentially forcing either massive borrowing or layoffs when we have an inevitable downturn. So that would be our apprehension with, you know, I know it's a big pool of money and there isn't a lot of money, and there's some appeal, and can we use this money for other purposes? But really, that was the, the purpose of it, to kind of have a forced savings account so there are people left to review building permits during the downtime when you really want the jobs and you really want the economic activity. So I'm not weighing in for or against, it's a, it's a complex thing we should look at. But that's, maybe that helps.
Can I get a copy of the old memo about what was once had? Because I obviously wasn't here, just someone get that for me.
We'll get that out. It came from the city manager's off, I mean, the city attorney's office, so they'll get that out to you.
Great, thank you.
I did want to just weigh in on this a little bit more, having managed budgets both with the enterprise fund and without. What happens is, you know, so if we're going to, say, raise fees July 1st, all the developers come in and pull their permits the end of the fiscal year, and the work all gets done in the next fiscal year with no revenue to support it. Because revenue that's collected in one fiscal year does not, doesn't go forward to support work done in the prior, in the next fiscal year, because revenue's year-to-year. It drops down into fund balance, and we could certainly reappropriate fund balance. The issue is that, over time, it becomes a situation where you hamper the ability of that department to do the work that's already been paid for. And so that is just something you have to manage, the year-to-year revenue collected in one year to support work that's happening in subsequent one or two fiscal years.
But I think also, your point is well-taken, that to us, it looks like, you know, the hot dog on a hot day. We, we see it and our eyes get big, but it is not necessarily sustainable, and it's also largely one time, right? We're, we're seeing a, you know, a pot of available money, but it's not sustainable. So I'm just saying, I appreciate the thought about exploring it because we have to do that, given some of the other discussions we've had over the past several days. But it also doesn't make long-term plans any better for us. It's like one-shot money in some ways that, that concerns me about why we would go down that road. And, and again, I'm learning. I need some more additional information.
And you are correct. Every building permit is a one-time shot at money. We do have standard amount of building permits that get pulled in any given year, so you can be, you have a certain amount of revenue you can count on each year. But it is volatile, it does change. And when there is a downturn, that's one of the revenues that'll drop first, and you've already have customers out there that have paid for service, that we need to continue to give them what they paid for while we're cutting staff, because we have had to do that.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilman Darden.
Thank you very much. And that, we all would like that memo, again, if you, if you don't mind.
We will disagree. Just for this discussion, this is our permit caseload over time, year over year, so you can see how volatile it gets.
Yes, very, very much so. And for those council members that weren't here when we came on in 2012, when all of the building permit processing was on the second floor, I remember for, it was probably about a year, maybe a little over a year, you could shoot a shotgun off on that floor and nothing was going on. I mean, it literally was quiet. And then now we're experiencing, obviously you're on a different floor, but there's lines and there's lots of activity. And that was just a great visual of, you know, the boom and the bust that we experienced. You know, your ask isn't a significant one. I think you have done a noble job within your department of streamlining things. I know there were lots of issues of getting things through, getting some consistency in the information going back out to the developer and, and building community, and, and they were having frustrations in who was processing what and why were you getting a different answer from different people? I will say this, in the last year, that has improved tremendously. And I hear that, you may not always get it from folks, but I certainly hear it, that they send kudos all the time. And I attribute that to your leadership. Angela is doing a phenomenal job. And I will leave you with this example to my fellow council members. So obviously, in my ward, probably one of the hottest contentious communities is Verdi, right? We have many, many issues, lots of growth planned wanting to come in there, lots of neighbors that have lots of concerns and questions. We have had a stakeholder meeting, we've had two of them so far, each meeting's about two hours long, that includes Verdi residents, the very vocal, very engaged members of the Verdi community, along with the developer property owners, along with city staff. Now, going into this, I would have said, this is going to be a very rough, very volatile process. I could not have been more wrong. They have been collaborative and respectful, and I have to say, I think there's going to be a new way in which we collaborate and meet with these communities that are, you know, passionate about retaining their neighborhood characters, but understanding that there's stuff coming in and how do we better mesh those two and marry those two. But I just wanted to relate to this body, those meetings have been great. I'll tell you what, Arlo is masterful. Masterful because he's compassionate and he understands. Well, he does. He goes in, in, with personalities that if you don't listen and really hear and come forward with some sort of compromise, it's not going to move forward. He has been phenomenal. So there's going to be sticking points. I'm sure there's going to be things that we're not all going to agree on, but that community, which we all are familiar with, between he and Angela, is doing great work. So, thank you.
That's great. I love to hear that.
Very, very kind. Thank you. There, there are a lot of great people behind us, helping us out, who aren't always right here on TV talking to you. So it's not just the two of us.
Okay. Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the presentation, Arlo. I just wanted to note a few items. I'm serving as the liaison to the enterprise fund now, and I'm just getting my feet wet on that. One of the first things I did was ask the board to meet out of their regular meeting schedule so that they could consider these proposals out of the building fund prior to this meeting, and they did. And kudos to them. I know Callie worked really hard trying to set up that meeting, and I was really pleased that they supported all of the requests. I was really happy to see that a stormwater inspector was, was proposed to be added. And one of the things I wanted to ask Arlo, and I kind of queued up, I hope you got this, that I wanted to better understand how many basins are really, how many stormwater ponds are to be inspected, and what is the general schedule? Do you think you'll hit them all once in five years or once in two years?
Thank you. I did get that question, and Mike Michel helped us out with that. In terms of, in the, we've, we're starting in the Swan Lake Basin, because that's the most, you know, pressing right now. I believe we had 60-some-odd basins in, in the Swan Lake Basin, stormwater basins. Those have all been inspected, all the property owners have been contacted, there's been work completed, there's a little bit of follow-up necessary with a handful of them. Mike Michel will be putting out a memo to council here in the next month or so, giving a more detailed update on that. But we're well underway on Swan Lake Basin. In terms of the other two closed basins, Silver Lake and Whites Lake, it's a comparable number. We haven't inventoried those exactly, but it's a comparable number in those two basins combined, so roughly 120 total stormwater basins in those closed hydrographic basins. And citywide, there are obviously quite a few more. In terms of staffing, we were able to absorb the initial, the initial program with our existing staff, but it has been a strain, and we've been limited in how many we've been able to do, just because of the workload that I mentioned earlier. But with the one FTE budget request, our team feels that that would be sufficient both to launch the program citywide in phases, moving from the closed basins out to the rest of the city, and then maintain that inspection program in perpetuity with effectively one FTE.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I am really pleased you put that in, and I would have expected even more, because I was really impressed that Michael Michel and his team were able to hit the 60 basins. And if I recall the data, some 30 to 40% of them were out of compliance, some were just technical issues, but some were severe issues in terms of managing the stormwater. And I mention this because, speaking to John Flansburgh when he made his presentation, you know, I specifically asked him, when are we planning to stand up formally the stormwater utility? And it sounds like all of the work is going to be done this year with a, maybe a launch one year from now. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're putting the pieces in place in terms of ASBILs, which are basically engineering drawings after the basins are built that show, yes, the basin was built as designed, and then we have the inspectors. I've been talking to the development community, and it sounds like there is some support for actually charging a fee for this in terms of a stormwater inspection. And I really think that this is something we should consider and talk to the development community in a more formal way about, because it is a big issue, and it does, it is an issue of concern, tremendous concern, whether these ponds are working or not working. And we have to be provided, we as a council, have to be provided the assurance that they're doing what they're supposed to do. And I think the building community very much understands that. So I'd like to, through this budget, make sure that that effort is underway. In other words, we're discussing a potential stormwater inspection fee, and we meet with the development community, and we set out actual schedule for doing these things. So when they're first built, we make sure we're out there to kind of give them a CVO on the basin, and then periodically, you know, I don't know what the periodic inspection would be, but that's something I'd like to see. And then, in terms of the Building Enterprise Fund in general, what I've come to understand is that NRS says that we can't increase fees unless, I guess you look at two times the revenue, excuse me, two times the expenditures or two times the amount remaining, but the bottom line is there's about $7 million in there. And I think with the proposed budget, we are at that number. So I think we are actually at a point where we potentially could look at increase in building fees. And the reason I'm mentioning it is, when we looked at the fee schedule, we were talking about CPI, but I looked at the schedule, pages and pages of the fee schedule, and it seemed like some whole parts of the city, just zero increase, and others had fee increases. And I just wondered, in terms of fairness, if we should be-- And I just wondered in terms of fairness if we should be applying CPI across all of the fee categories. So this was just kind of a question to you, Arlo, is what do you think about that? And to the council, you know, it's something we should probably consider.
I know Ms. Lochner wants to weigh in on this too, but I want to thank you for the question. There's, there's a couple layers of fees as it relates to the Building Enterprise Fund. There are changes in the valuation, essentially how much each square foot or each home is valued at. And then there's changes in the fee charged per valuation. So the proposal today is not to change the one piece of the fee, which is the amount charged per unit. But the valuation table, our team did some calculations, and those numbers are proposed to increase by 5.3% on average. So what's in front of the council today is not a flat fee. It's, it's a significant increase, pretty close to, I think, what we're capped at.
Is that a one-time fee? Or is that a one-time fee based on the increase in valuation?
It's a, it's the fee charged upon permitting. So yes, it's charged one time.
Okay, thanks. If I may.
Oh, go ahead, and then I'll move on.
The rule is for the enterprise funds that you are not supposed to have more than half of your annual operating in your fund balance. We are well above that. And because if you are above that, you can only increase your fee by CPI. So we actually have to go in and do an analysis and likely decrease the fees in order to meet compliance with NRS.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, Ms. Lochner just made my point right there. You know, we're running a huge surplus and we're raising fees on poor seniors, but we're in a position of decreasing fees. You know, and I get the valuation piece. I was involved in those discussions as the BFAC rep before. It just is a tremendous inequity. And another thing is, when you put the table up of $10.2 million coming into the enterprise fund.
Billion.
The building.
Billion.
I'm sorry.
Ten point, 10 billion in valuation.
Oh, that was valuation.
That was valuation, and it doesn't necessarily translate to the same number of permits if you, as you change a valuation table.
And valuation, you know, we'll see what the, valuation is not the most useful number. What the most useful number is, is property tax generation, and we're working off a 7%. And I'm not seeing a 20% increase that she's showing in her 10-year forecast. So we can say 10 billion valuation, but this body cares about what property tax goes off. And it really are those things that our master plan told us we were going to look at, as how we commit our land, how we commit our public infrastructure, how we build our communities, how they impact our citizens, but also how they impact our bottom line. And they only impact our bottom line in this context in property tax kickoff. Okay? So 15 million square feet up in the North Valleys, great. But I'm not seeing a whole kick in her property tax estimations. And I know that every single one of those is coming in with a huge impact to the sewer fund and the stormwater, and also a lot of conflict. And I, I'll be looking for the case study of what Ms. Jarden discussed going on in Verdi and this planning effort, because I've been calling for a, a true stood-up, equitable, engaged participatory planning effort in that part of the valley since 2014 when the rock crushing came in. Wanted to see that. Wanted to see how the overpass at Verdi, which has been shown up to us as being substandard, was going to get programmed in through NDOT through RTC. Spent time, a lot of time, at Tamoa buying that Boomtown Water System, which is just a tiny part of the equation. Wanted to see a community center to make Old Town Verdi very vibrant as a place that has some place and not a place that has, there's no there there, which is what I'm seeing. And so the planning efforts are very important. If there's informal discussions and it results in something, great. But I've seen six years of a lot of growth and nothing addressing the multi-faceted, both the infrastructure, the place building that we need out there. And you know what I saw this week? Was half of Verdi has appealed something coming to us sometime. So I don't, I don't know. I don't, I'm not critical of the Community Development Department on that component. I just, you know, there's the budgetary, but there's also the focus of doing the implementation, the master plan that I feel has really fallen off. And maybe we'll get through the zoning code and we'll move further, but.
I would like to address that because our second priority was directly related to implementing the master plan. And so I don't want it to be thought of that we're not doing that. Certainly, we could do more of it with some more people.
Which, Mr. Stockham, which one is that?
It's on the slide prior. It's our second priority. It's on the sheet prior to that. It's our second priority moving forward.
Okay, let's see.
It's phase two of the zoning process and also some of the, some of the public infrastructure and facility planning called for in the master plan.
Councilwoman Doer.
Well, I see a cell as your number two.
Page 64, if you look at the major initiatives and strategies.
Okay.
The seconds bullet point on the right, kickoff, neighborhood zoning.
That's a strong focus of ours moving forward.
I see that as just basically a continuation of the zoning code update, going out in a mapping exercise. Is it a planning exercise where we're going to talk about, you know, start with values and divine boundaries? Or is it just a continuation of implementing the zoning code? How's that?
It's both. It's zoning map changes and also looking at infrastructure improvement priorities and neighborhood improvements and things of that nature.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Councilwoman Doer. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just one other item I wanted to mention and kind of put a marker, and I don't know how this fits in with the budget, but we're already beginning this year a planning effort for the southeast part of our town, basically east of Double Diamond, Damone Ranch, going up the hill into Story County. The Sunny Hills Development has said they might be coming in. And for those of you who don't know, it's 20,000 acres, I believe, that they have up there, and they want to extend South Meadows up into Story County. It's going to be, require tremendous demand on our staff. And in order to get ahead of that, what I was beginning with Mr. Bill Thomas was an effort to look at the regional kind of open space planning. So we would then be able to fit in these developments around that and ensure that there is space, you know, for everything, including the roads. The RTC just finished the South Reno traffic study, and they have dozens upon dozens of upon dozens of projects that need to be done that are going to be on a 10-year-out kind of schedule. So I just want to make sure, I don't, I, the reason I'm bringing it up is I was asked to use my council funds to fund this effort, both this year and next year. And I'm willing to do that. I mean, this is a very top priority. But I also want to make sure that there's funding in this budget, which I don't see to begin that effort. I mean, we're talking about, I think, something like five times bigger than Daybreak in terms of acres. So it's just enormous. So I guess I'm looking to you, Arlo, what are we thinking?
That's one of many planning initiatives on our plate moving forward. You may recall that last year, you authorized a long-range planning position. Frankly, we've been struggling to fill that with qualified candidates. We've gone back out. We were able to find some savings and upgrade that to a principal planner, and that's being advertised right now. So we really do need to fill that position. Certainly, we could do more. If council finds some money and would like to give us an additional planner, that was going to be next on our list. We were, we had some discussions, should we put in for that? And I certainly wouldn't oppose getting an additional staff member so we could do more. But short answer, Councilwoman Doer, is yes, we are planning to do it. And yes, we will have capacity to do it. And it's, it's a good initiative.
Okay, well, let us know because, you know, again, I'm willing to devote the majority of my council funds to that, but, you know, this is a long-term, ongoing effort that's going to be need to be done, not just kind of a one-shot, we're done. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Breckin.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, I'm trying to kind of understand all these activities going on. I didn't know the one that Ms. Jarden's working on. I didn't know about the one Ms. Doer's talking about. I do know that I came to budget two years ago and asked for funds to implement the downtown action plan for the west, northwest quadrant. We put $40,000 in the budget for that, and then we went to contract with it. The council decided not to do that planning effort. I thought I was going through the protocol of we say in this function where we're going to do area plans, or, you know, if we're going to focus on infill areas, where we're going to do those. And then it seems like there are these one-off efforts. So I just, I'm not understanding, you know, if this is our priorities and our work program, and then I hear, well, we're having meetings and it's a very participatory thing, I don't think that's very inclusive. So is there, am I missing something? Are you?
Yeah, I think so.
How is this working?
We're working on the west, we're working on the West Fourth Street planning initiatives with the property owners out there and also with the RTC. So that's one of a number of planning initiatives that are, that are ongoing.
Well, I'm one of the council, I'm the council member there, and how come I don't know about it?
Happy to provide a brief.
Yeah. Well, how about, how about this? I think that we know our neighborhoods and our growth areas need attention. And it's beyond the Planning Commission, the appeals we get here, it's beyond the zoning code. I mean, what exactly, where are, do you have a slate of long-range planning efforts you're working on? And I understand the difficulty you've had in hiring a planner. Is there, is there a list?
We can bring, we can bring forward. I don't have a list right here in front of me. But yes, we can summarize it. And a big part of it is going to be budget constraints. Ultimately, you don't get a Porsche for a budget for an old truck.
Yeah.
So we're going to, council's going to have to balance those things, and we could certainly do more with one more planner. But we think if we can get a high-level planner in to complement the team we have, we can really continue the progress we've made over the last year and get some of these efforts done.
Yeah. So just to clarify, the long-range planner hasn't been filled, but there's been some long-range planning efforts other people are doing?
Yes, absolutely. We finished the regional plan update. We've been in front of you with quite a few different text amendments. We're actively engaging in the update to the regional transportation plan and various other area-specific initiatives.
Okay. Well, then that helps me understand why you're not asking for more efforts to do long-range planning, because you have some going on.
And, and because we were listening to the council talk and struggle with limited budgets and public safety and other priorities and homeless services. And we wanted to put forward a budget that was consistent with what we've been hearing from the council.
Yeah.
We would certainly be happy to throw in for another five staff. You know, it would be great. I'd be the first one to jump on.
But, but if I could just conclude is, I think your department is so critical to help us get ahead of these issues. I mean, someone here the other day was telling our chief, "Chief, you have got to let us know when these developments cause a problem for us." Remember that? And, and the chief said, "Well, I thought I did." So we really need your department to help us get ahead of this before they impact the other departments and other needs. So getting out in front, I think it's very critical for your department.
Just last night, the Planning Commission unanimously endorsed the police impact fee system. So we've been working with RPD to develop that. That'll be coming forward to the city council here to establish a consistent funding mechanism for police facilities. So we're working on many of those initiatives.
That's great. Thank you so much, Arlo. I really appreciate it. I know you guys are working so incredibly hard. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah. You're sitting over there quietly. But I see you. You're doing a good job. Yeah. Think. Yeah. What do you want? 15 minutes? Yeah, we're going to take a, actually, let's do 20 minutes. We'll be back in 20 minutes.
20 minutes, we'll be back in 12:40.
12:40.
12:40. I'm going to say 12:45, just for good measure.
Okay. 12:45.
Thank you.
No, not necessarily. We just don't put it in the budget book. We could certainly have the department. I, you know, my last. Um. Well, I know. A couple bands. Have it now. For you to put it in your budget. Who the people are. Right. Right. Well, and it does evolve because positions get filled while we're going through the process, but.
All right, Madam Mayor, we can call your meeting back to order at this time. I believe we have Councilmember Dewar is on the phone and she's indicated that she can hear us. So at this time, we'll transition to our next presentation, which I believe is Civil Service. Civil Service is next.
Nice to see you. Is this the first time you've had to come to council?
Yes, it is. I am fairly.
Well, don't stress. There's no one here. So it's all good.
I know. You guys have scared everybody away from me. Thank you.
There's only two. There's only 2.2 million watching.
I've worn everyone out.
No, I'm just kidding.
I'm just kidding.
I'm Barbara Ackerman with the Civil Service Commission. For the record, I'm here representing the Commission for Budget Discussion, so. Been with this, oh, I've been with the city here for about four months. It was a couple of days into my being here when a couple like things kept coming at me. It was like, you need to know what you need for budget. And I'm like, oh, I need to hurry up and figure that out. And so I am still kind of figuring that out. So from some of the ask, I want to kind of explain where my thinking is as we get there because that's evolving.
Sure.
As I get a better grasp on what we do need as we kind of move forward. So first off, we are the smallest tiny department in the city. We currently have four FTEs, including myself, and two of those are currently vacant and we are recruiting for. So we are at 50% staff and still holding our head above water. So it's always good news. But we definitely accomplish a lot of work, even with our little tiny staff, like all the other departments. We do that with very minimal resources. We recently, or I recently reorganized when we had the two vacancies come up. I think to better align our department with the organizational needs, and I think that will be successful when we get these positions filled and we get people trained to better meet the demands. And that was a budget neutral movement. So that was kind of nice to be able to do that. But that's us, tiny little department. So our core services, really, we are the hiring arm for the city. Mostly what we do is recruit and prepare eligible list for hire to hiring managers so that the work of the city can get done and is facilitated through us that way. So recruitment has been a big issue for us. It's been increasing about seven to 10% per year over the last few years. So the demands are definitely growing. We processed over 200 requisitions this year with a staff of about, I don't think our department's actually been fully staffed for several years, of probably two to three on a regular basis, and have screened over 6,000 applications that have come through. And when we screen an application, not only are we just looking at them, we're responding to them, touching them numerous times. So there's a whole lot of work that comes through here. We provide a huge amount of our, or dedicate a huge amount of our resources to public safety hiring. They accounted for 50% of the hiring that we did last year, which we prioritize. They also take up or demand about two-thirds of our capacity overall within the department, which really leaves our resources really thin to devote to the rest of the city and all of their hiring needs as well. We also do examinations and really exam, our examination process really just supports us being able to put forth the best candidates to the hiring managers to try to do as much of the work upfront for them so that they are actually spending their time looking at highly qualified candidates and making informed decisions from there. So we use a lot of different approaches to do that, and some of my ask is going to be to help us facilitate that as we move forward. We, we support a commission, an independent commission who hears employee administrative complaints in disciplinary hearings. So we also provide and do investigations for them, provide research for them, and help them by making recommendations. And a lot of our staff time is dedicated to the support of that commission as well. See, education and outreach, that's really internally and externally, trying to make sure that the services and the values that we bring to the departments and then current employees and candidates is well communicated. We also support internal functions and providing opportunity for career pathing and growth for our current employees, provide feedback when they go through a promotional process on their career development and growth, and try to create a system that allows for fluid movement within the city organization so that we can retain great workforce instead of losing them to outside entities. So top accomplishments, like I said, I kind of came in at the end, so I can't really take very much credit for a lot of the positive forward momentum that civil service has captured in the last year, but I am hoping to continue that momentum as we move forward. Some of the things that I think that were really important pieces of what civil service did was work, start to create more of a collaborative process with the departments. And one of those was with the Police and Fire Department. They took a look at how they were testing at their entry level and how they were bringing in that group of candidates and people into the city, and they settled on a new testing platform that is National Testing Network, which is more of a computer-based, more candidate-forward process that I think has a lot more transparency. It is used throughout the country. It's well-known to the candidates out there and the people who are wanting to go into those fields. So it's not something that's kind of like out of left field. It's something that most candidates are used to using, which I think increases our reach and our ability to recruit. It has definitely increased the validity and reliability of those testing processes, and it has enhanced the quality and the diversity of the candidates that they have seen. It's also allowing us an opportunity to do continuous recruiting for our entry-level firefighting, which is going to be extremely valuable as we need to capture more of the demographic who wants to go into these public safety fields because those applicant pools are shrinking. And we need to be able to be more responsive to the moment in time when they decide, I want to be a firefighter, or I want to be a police officer, and we need to have an opportunity available for them at that time. The old way of we open a recruitment for a week or a month to capture somebody at the time that we're waiting for them, we're going to miss so many opportunities to gather those candidate pools and to touch them and to continue to keep them in the loop of how we're doing with our hiring. And it's going to be extremely important, like I said, because those applicant pools are shrinking every day. So we want to make sure we can capture those. And so that new process, huge accomplishment, like I say, great collaborative effort, and I think that the value of that is something that we're going to see extend out well into the future on that. We've also been able to introduce some new testing technology that has allowed us to provide online unproctored testing, which once again increases our applicant reach, allows us to move outside of the boundaries of just the Reno metro area and grab applicants who don't necessarily have to travel here to test, but can entertain the idea of a position here with the city without actually having to come here just to apply and qualify for the job. So that's been, I think, helpful. And once again, I think those are benefits that we'll see long into the future as we continue to expand those opportunities. We've also been working really hard to increase and open up lines of communication between civil service, human resources, departments, and hiring managers. A process was implemented to allow civil service to gather, incorporate candid feedback through our processes. And I think a lot of what was happening in the past was civil service would just do something and then it would just get done. And there wasn't really a lot of opportunity to get the feedback of, did that really work? Did that not work? What can we do to improve that? And those conversations are beginning to happen, and it's really improving, impacting the work that we do and the way we do it, and making, I mean, helping to make us more responsive to the needs and the overall business demands of the city. So that is something that was started early last year and continues to just pay off immensely, and that we're continuing. And if you look at our major initiatives and strategies, they really kind of build off of all of those things that we started last year. Just really, we started looking at rule, the civil service rules, kind of in a holistic approach last year and realized that those needed to be taken, looked at closely, just piece by piece by piece, and to really break those down and see what we can do to create a modern, flexible system that really works to meet the organizational needs. And so we are beginning that process. We will be bringing a rule change to you guys here in the next couple of weeks. You'll see that vote by you for approval at our next commission meeting. And it's a pretty exciting change. It opens up some non-career-appointed position opportunities, which will allow Parks and Recreation to deal more effectively with some of their temp seasonal hiring issues that they've experienced in the past. So a lot of exciting things are going to be coming forward that way that I think will help facilitate a lot of the work that everybody that's been standing here, who's been talking, they need to get done, and that we want to make sure that we're supporting that. So huge part of our initiative moving forward. Also looking at ways to become more responsive instead of reactive. So if we can create ways of having lists, hiring list, ready for our most requested positions, like to go as soon as vacancies occur. We are working on developing that. Also to work in advance or proactively. Also to work in advance or proactively to create a process that's ready to go when a vacancy occurs, even in the classifications that we don't hire for regularly, so that we can kind of reduce the pain when a vacancy happens. The departments don't think they have to wait six, eight, 10, 12 weeks to fill that and get that worked on. We should be able to go right away, which would create like more of an on-demand system, which is not something that we've had in place with civil service. So moving towards that is really exciting. And then just really trying to increase the communication with the departments when they know a vacancy is coming up in something that has had a long-term incumbent or something that's very difficult to recruit for and trying to get ahead of that as soon as possible so that, once again, we can meet those needs in a timely manner. Some of the other things is we need to develop a high-performing resilient department. There's been a lot of kind of up and down with the department over the last few years. It hasn't been fully staffed. When one person leaves, a lot of the institutional knowledge has gone with them, kind of leaving, just like not, not just a lot of continuity. So that is definitely one of the goals that I have is to create a department that has some stabilized structure to it, that cross-trains. Right now, a lot of work was done in silos, so one, one person was doing certain things and nobody else knew what that was. And so creating cross-training and flexibility within our own staff will help to create that continuity as we move on. So that's a huge priority for me this year, especially as we get new people onboard. And you'll see that in my ask, one of the things is to provide training for that new staff so that we can hopefully accomplish one of these initiatives, which I think is just so valuable to the city. And then continue to work on increasing customer satisfaction. We have three very different, unique customer groups that we serve. We serve the hiring departments and the hiring managers who have particular needs, but we also serve the employees of the city through civil service protections and things that are afforded to them. And we also serve our candidates who have different needs sometimes than our, our hiring departments and managers. And so really trying to balance the needs of all of those three very, like I said, distinct customer groups is something that we constantly will be working on to make sure that that is optimal as well. So our budget, it's not quite as tiny as our little department, but just like pretty much everyone else, we're, we're basically a service-based business in civil service. That's what we provide as service. So most of our, our stuff is sitting at salaries, about 80% actually. The remaining 20% of that budget is really, the costs really go out to cover our recruiting and testing and general operating of the department. One of the staggering numbers I was looking at was of that kind of operating piece of this budget, 65%, minimum 65% or over 90,000 of that goes towards public safety entry level and promotional hiring. And then most of that is getting spent on assessment centers. And assessment centers are really the industry standard for police and fire promotional selection and career growth processes. So that's something that, you know, that clearly aligns, it's just a huge take of our budget. And once again, that doesn't leave a whole lot for a lot of the other things that we do. But the rest of the budget really does go at this point to pay for outside vendors and supplies to support recruiting and testing, which is something that I'm hoping to bring in-house a little bit more and find some savings there as we have a staff that is more developed and trained to do some of that work itself. So on to the ask. So on this one, if you look at our FTE request, it's really just one request. A, B, and C are just kind of three options because, like I said, I'm still really trying to figure it out and we haven't had a full staff yet to really get a full understanding of what our capacity really looks like. I do know that there is nothing built into our staffing structure that provides, there's no position that provides any sort of administrative or clerical support. So I have analysts, management analysts making a lot of money answering phones for three, four hours a day and I not able to do the work that needs to be getting done so that hiring departments can be doing the hiring that they need to, to get the work done that they need to do. So this piece here is just trying to figure out a way to kind of plug that dam, like the hole in our dam that is missing in that kind of support. We, we're forward-facing. We probably filled 50 to 100 calls a day from applicants, especially like during a fire recruitment or a police recruitment like we're going through right now, not to mention all of the emails. And all of those need touches. They need someone to take their time to do that. And we're filling that right now with a temporary position. We have somebody who comes in 17 and a half hours a week and it's great when she's there and it's not so great when she's not there. And our current funding that we have in our salaries budget only allows for us to have that person at that minimal amount of staffing for about six months of the year. So even with that, it's going to go away and won't even be able, we won't even be able to utilize that on a regular basis a year. So the first one, the A is, you know, honestly, that's the wish list one. And I don't even know if that's necessarily what we need. So I really want to kind of move on to B because I think this is really a more realistic look at what would significantly impact our operations is a part-time, regular position. It would create some consistency. It would create a classified position of ongoing work, which is what it should be. It shouldn't be being filled by a temporary position. And it also will kind of slow down that revolving door that we experience with a temporary position of having to hire and train and then do without and then hire and train, which is not the best way or best use of resources as well. The C part is really kind of like my last, like if I can't get anything else, can I at least get my temp seasonal employee for the whole year to, to help kind of fill in those really busy times and we could figure out a way to strategically make that work. So that's kind of all rolled into one. So those are not individual asks, it's really just different options to fill that one need. The second priority is really another piece of this, still trying to figure out what we can do with our capacity because there's a lot of things that we're purchasing, like a lot of outside contracted services that we're purchasing that I think we can bring in-house once we have a full staff and we have them trained and are working at a high capacity. But I don't know without the top piece, so these are kind of interrelated. So as far as computer-based assessments and recruiting platforms go, this, this is imperative for us to move towards this in order to strategically align ourselves and the world around us. Applicants do not want to come in here and take a pen and pencil test any longer and do it on the little Scantrons. It turns applicants away and it's not really the most conducive way to say, hey, you've got to take time off work at two o'clock in the middle of Monday to come and try to get a better job, hopefully here at the city with us because we have a great opportunity, but they don't know if they're going to get that job. And so 50% of the people who even sign opt-tastic exams don't even show up and you can clearly see why. And so the technology out there will allow us to provide a lot more flexibility, a lot more transparency for our candidates and it'll also help us to attract them and actually get them not to just like, hey, I'd like to work for the city of Reno, but actually get them into our door and get them sitting in front of our hiring managers as where we need them, especially in those really, really highly demanded areas like planning and engineering and IT especially. So those kinds of things, it's just really important that we move into that. So this ask really is to help to support that movement. I think I can grab some of the budget that we currently have and put it towards that. But like I said, once I can move stuff out of my staffing, I can use some of that money a little bit more towards this, but anything I could get in this area would help to facilitate that more as well. So all of those kinds of things, more staff would kind of free up, like current resources, no staff will not, so I need more money here. So it's really kind of just me trying to juggle that ball. But I think we can do a lot with not a whole lot. So, and it really all trickles down, like every dollar that's spent with civil service really benefits everybody else in the city here that's trying to get their work done as well. So it would be used very wisely to support that. And then moving on to three, professional development. Once again, employment law is really complex and is constantly changing and it's just something that we need to make sure that we're on top of so that we are creating a nice cushion for the city as far as liability goes and making sure that we're doing things correctly. And I'm also bringing on new staff who will need additional training in order to kind of, you know, get them up to speed. So I do ask that we get a little bit of that into our budget this year. I think it's a one-time ask because I'm thinking we'll be able to absorb that better in the next coming years because I'm hoping that we'll have a more normalized staffing situation at that point. On four is ergonomic workstations. When I came into the civil service office, I think all of the furniture that the staff was using is probably older than myself and it's just not the best conducive environment for productivity, productivity and it's certainly not the most healthy. And so we were given $6,800 last year that we are now spending. We've been able to update our workstations for about half of the staff and this additional money will allow us to do that for the rest of our staff, like I said, so that they can have a productive and healthy work environment, which I think is important for attracting and retaining talent here to the city. And our non-computer electronics, which is really silly, I know, a $700 request, but this is, we have a $3,800 a year supply budget that buys our copy paper, our pens, our paper and everything else that we need to operate. And we have moved the city as a city to on-base, which requires us to scan documents in and we don't have $700 of that money to put towards purchasing those scanners, so we added it here. But really, that's about it. It's still a big ask, I know, with the limited resources, but I do appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you. Good job. You made it.
Yeah, I know, my first one.
All right. Questions from council members? Anything from Councilwoman Reese? Let me just ask you this, I think we've talked about this before, but why isn't civil service wrapped into HR?
And I think that's a charter issue. So I think that, that is part of the city's charter and they do, I mean, what civil service does is really just a function, like an other, like a function of HR. And I know there is some, you know, some crossovers there and there's probably some efficiencies that can be had. But a lot of organizations are split out that way because of the way that the commission, but I also seen some ends. So other than not knowing what the original thought processes were when your city charter broke that out, I don't really.
Well, I like your vision because I think you make some really good points with the, the testing and I think it's been really outdated. And I think, you know, actually it has turned off a lot of people from applying. And so I really like that you're, you're bringing us up to.
Yeah, and I just, and I do want you to know that the testing isn't really just because we're a civil service department. The testing is really more critical today than ever because the, the costs associated with making a bad hire are higher than they've ever been. And so more and more agencies and private companies are turning towards these same testing types of products in order to help screen through and not just bring in candidates, but bring in qualified candidates. And so that's not really necessarily just a function because we're a civil service department, but that is, you know, that's a service that we provide so that, like I said, once the hiring managers do sit down with their applicants, they're like, they have viable candidates, so they're not wasting their time with them.
Less turnover is much better.
Yeah, hopefully.
For sure. Yeah. All right. Any questions? Councilwoman Doerr? If you want.
I, I would just, I would just support the comment that you made a little earlier, which was why do these things have to be separated out? And the reason is, is I totally understand the need for the office assistant support. And if these groups were together, you know, that might, need might be able to be met without having to get a whole nother person. Same for other kind of support issues in terms of supplies and those kind of things. I understand there's a legacy issue from, you know, in the day when we didn't have very diverse recruiting. And I have to believe in today's age that we have overcome some of those things. But I just think it's something we should continue to explore and ask the charter committee to at least visit. Thank you.
All right. Good, thank you. All right, any other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you so much. Good job.
Madam Mayor, our next presentation is from City Manager's Office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, Dylan Shaver, your Chief of Staff, here to present to you the City Manager's Office budget. You can see here that to accomplish sort of the council's needs and administer the needs of the city, the City Manager's Office relies on 21 very hard-working employees. Throughout today's presentation, I will highlight a few of them. For those who are listening, if I don't give you a call out by name, please accept my apologies in advance, but there are 21 and they're already staring at me to get off the stage. So the work of the City Manager's Office divides really into four core divisions. The administrative division, which provides support to this body and provides leadership to the city at large. Arts, culture, and special events, Ms. Hill and all of the work that you did with her at your meeting at the end of February, all of that runs through the City Manager's Office. Economic development, where we see things like the downtown action plans and your Thousand Homes in 120 Days Initiative lives in the City Manager's Office. And then the Office of Policy and Strategy, with which I am, of course, personally quite familiar, is where we ran your strategic planning efforts that you also wrapped up at the end of last month and that informed this budget process. So the, where we run the intergovernmental relations, which is how we helped the fire chief obtain the grant for personal protective equipment that he announced during his presentation. That's also where the sustainability program runs and our other sort of program developments, duties as required by this body, depending on what services it is you're looking from us at any given time. It is difficult to look back at the last fiscal year and, and say sort of, these were the best things that happened because so much work does travel through this work unit. By just hitting the, the highlights, we accomplished a lot last year and, or in the past year, I should say, in terms of organizational effectiveness. And that's going to continue to be a drive for the office in the next fiscal year as well. This is where we saw your strategic planning efforts. To buttress that strategic planning efforts, we also did a cultural study, a sort of internal to the city, see what our, what makes our workforce tick and see how we can sort of integrate them more into the leadership process and more into the work that you would like us to do over the years. It had sort of seemed that there was a bit of a disconnect that had formed between the workforce and the work. And it's our job to make sure that that bond is as strong as possible. So we implemented a study last year and we've put together a panel to help maintain and really build the culture in this organization. The saying goes that a, your culture will eat your strategic plan for lunch. We want to make sure that we have the workforce that is primed to deliver for you the priorities that you've set forth. And of course, in the last year, we have brought to you, you know, several grants from the Pennington Foundation and other places in support of our Public Safety Center. And that is a huge accomplishment that we really should spend a couple of seconds on because in conversing with your amazing staff here who for years has been demanded to do more with less, it's just the nature of the economy, one thing that they are not is trained professional fundraisers. And it's certainly not the kind of thing that, that slips naturally into this, but I've been in those meetings with, with, with your personnel who are, you know, pulling out all the stops to make this happen. And I think we've all been on the receiving end of that old Bill Thomas charm and we get the, to, to close deals like this one and that, you know, it's, it's not an easy task getting those sorts of things done and it's in nobody's job description. But, you know, you have leaders in this organization who will step up and get it done. Moving forward, obviously, the top priority for the City Manager's Office is implementing the vision that you set forth in your strategic plan and fulfilling the, the needs placed on this organization by the city council. As I'm sure you understand, they are voluminous and it's our job to sort of play traffic cop and make sure that we're taking everything in appropriately and fielding it out to the right places. We're going to continue our work on a positive and thoughtful culture and we're going to, you know, finish. And we are going to, you know, finish out our great work in the Harvard Bloomberg Innovation Track Project. I think we'll have a council presentation on that as we get closer to the end of that project. But it has really been an opportunity for the, a cross-departmental group of leaders in this organization to get together and start thinking about the major problems that face our community in a brand-new way. And we're taking this very seriously. Our finance director is part of that team. Our fire chief is part of that team. Our parks director. It's a, it's a great group of people and it is going to tackle a very complex problem. We all know that the homelessness issues around the river have grown to a point where our residents no longer feel comfortable and where you, as policymakers, have obviously grown very frustrated and as staff, so have we. So hopefully, we can produce some great results out of that. I'd be remiss to talk about that as if it is only one effort and if it is our sort of only hope along the Truckee River. Of course, we know that a handful of staff and a program through Harvard isn't going, we're not going to show up with the silver bullet for you. And so I want to sort of measure expectations accordingly because that is part of a broader effort. And that is where we start talking about our clean and safe operations that you heard a little about earlier today. And I just wanted to highlight some of the successes we've had in that operation real quick for you. Primarily since, since January, I wanted to point out for you that they have collected 358 yards of trash. Now, that's a context-free number and so I crunched them for you. The trash bag in your kitchen is roughly a 13-gallon trash bag. 358 yards of trash is approximately 4,649 kitchen trash bags full of trash that they've collected. They've also managed to collect 224 gallons of biohazard. And this is probably too polite a presentation to get into what exactly that means, as well as fielded 239 calls for service. Mr. Reese, earlier today, when Lieutenant Robinson, whose work on this project has been admirable to say the very least, was up, you asked about noticing for these sites. And it looks like, and these numbers are from, well, they're from yesterday, but they're for February, so I think they should be pretty complete. We've delivered 267 of those notices and, Councilmember, they look like this. They are sort of displayed prominently. I think of all of those, and I'll just look for a head nod here, all of those, we've only ended up having to sort of impound one person's property. So we're still just at one on that. All right, I'm getting my nods. And that is available for pickup if they are listening at the Community Assistance Center, that they can go. I think we have to keep it there for something like 60 or 90 days. The other piece of that, and again, we'll just get into my calling out individual staff members, particularly on the noticing front, because there seem to be a lot of interest around that, is an employee we have upstairs named John Berenberg. John, you know, he's really spearheading this operation and going down to these sites and he has rapport with the individuals we're dealing with. He has conversations with them, lets them know that, you know, these cleanups are coming through, that we need, we have a duty to, you know, make sure that the, to the extent that this is a public health issue, to make sure these sites are clean. I think you heard the description of what was happening at the railroad yards. And so, you know, there is a very human component to this level of outreach. So I just wanted to highlight a little bit on clean and safe, which again, even that plus Harvard, isn't going to be the solution to the problem, right? And this body has prioritized in its strategic plan, finding, you know, other ways to skin the cat and address this huge issue for our community. To that end, you can see here again, an essentially flat budget. The increase you see does primarily account to the permanent inclusion of, our recommendation for the permanent inclusion of clean and safe, which is the top priority for our requests here. For, we have only been running this as a pilot heretofore at the cost, I believe, of a quarter million dollars. We've plugged in an anticipated cost of just over $600,000 for fiscal year '21. That cost accounts for, of course, that we would need to go out to bid for that. Since we're doing a pilot, we didn't do that previously, so we would need to go out to bid. We have had positive experience with COIT, but we do know there's other operators out there, so just to be clear there. The second request is to provide some support to our economic development work unit. We have very high expectations of this unit, which is really two people. And there are just areas simply where we do not have the technical expertise to pursue the appropriate types of grants or to even, you know, determine the appropriate incentives that would be required to go get those grants. So we're asking for a small enhancement there to allow for that. The third priority coming out of the City Manager's Office is an enhancement from Ms. Kidd over there in the corner. She, we put a lot of pressure on our internal audit function. Obviously, when we talk about institutional effectiveness, one of the keys to really drive those figures up is to minimize waste, fraud, and abuse. Now, we'd like to say that the latter two aren't really our concern, but waste is an area where we want to make sure that we are getting through every penny. And so the audits that you see and the responses to that all go through that office. Right now, all of that work is being done by a single person. This would sort of, I don't even want to promise to you standing here that approving that third priority would enhance our audit operation, but it would allow us to continue our audit operation at the pace that you have seen it over the last few years. I think that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I appreciate some of your comparisons. It puts it into perspective. I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that presentation. Can we go back to the multi-year? Okay, right there. So, you know, obviously, this is the one department that's probably going to undergo the most change this year because we're going to have a new city manager and, but it's also a very small department. How many FTEs? 21?
21, ma'am.
Oh, it's actually more than I recall. So, and I get the position requests. I know, you know, a management assistant is helpful for any one-person shop, like our auditor. But I wanted to go into the, so we augmented this year, or no, we went to contingency for the COIT. So you want to build it into the budget this year? Is that what you're, you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
And there isn't any backfilling through any of the federal grant programs for that sort of effort?
Not that we've identified at this time.
Okay. Okay. And the COIT is deployed outside of the downtown improvement district. I know they're going off to Cemetery Road soon, so that's outside. Let me ask you this. Remind me why services and supplies jumped 1.2 million from 2018 to 2019?
So that is likely that they were given some one-time funding and may have been for a program. We can look it up exactly what that was. Again, similar to the clean and safe team, you started out as a pilot and if you end up saying it was a program we wanted to continue, then we continue it. But we can pull out the actual details for you on that of where it changed and why.
Yeah, I mean, I actually think it might have been when, it might have been when public art maybe came in and special events came in. Do you think that?
Well, so this is the general fund budget and most of our public art and special events is paid for out of a different fund.
Okay, so it would have been reflected there.
Again, you know, that, that was my first year of service to the city, so I can go get that detail for you.
Yeah, I guess on the org chart, and we received a memo from Madam Manager, I have hardship with having the fire department as a part of the City Manager's Office. I just, she wrote us a memo about a month ago and told us that the fire department was going to be reporting up through a different chain of command than to her. And I just, you know, I've been around cities a long time and I just don't see public safety. I, I don't think that I have ever heard of a chief reporting to someone other than a city manager. Maybe an assistant city manager, if that person themselves was a chief at one point. But I'm having considerable difficulty conceptualizing the fire department being in the City Manager's Office. I want, and I know we're in transition, but I want the chiefs to always report directly to the City Manager's Office and be separate from the fire department, or separate from the manager's office. Well, don't you?
May I, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead.
Don't you see fire department here?
Reporting decisions are made by the city manager. And so in the rebalancing of the different departments, I did make that shift. However, I'm still very much involved with Mr. Shaver and also with Chief Cochrane in all things fire. And that said, also, although the classifications are different between the assistant city manager and the chief of staff, they are the same level. They do both, in their job descriptions, have a responsibility for departments reporting to them.
That's fine. I just want to use this because we have the org chart here to mention, and you're leaving, we'll have a new city manager come on. But when I did get that memo, it caused me considerable concern. I cannot think of or would be hard-pressed to find an organizational structure where you don't have a fire chief reporting directly up to a city manager.
Prior to my coming here, the Reno Fire Department reported to an assistant city manager.
Okay, thank you.
So I did get an answer to the earlier question on why the services and supplies jumped up. That has to do with the reimbursements to the departments for special events. So we changed the way it is because we reimburse the departments for what they do. So it is a matter of it goes from this budget to another budget so that they are kept whole to manage the special events.
And interdepartmental, okay, rather than in interdepartmental?
So it's not actually money we actually expend outside of the organization. It's a movement from City Manager's Office into the other departments for their support of the special events.
And just follow up, who does the fire chief report to right now?
I'm going to go to Councilwoman Darden. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Two comments. City manager's organization and reporting is hers to define. And if the new person wants to change it, then that's up to them to potentially change it. My comments are going to be on the clean and safe and the COIT contract. I have noticed a marked improvement and heard it from constituents that they're seeing. More cleanliness and you're saying 350 yards of trash, which I liked your translation into 4,649 trash bags. That's significant and 224 gallons of biohazard, yish. I will say this with regards to COIT, and you guys will go out, assuming this gets approved and your contract is with whoever. Quite beyond their performance on this particular task, I will say they have reached out and are engaging with some of the issues that are contributing to homelessness on the whole to see how they can, as an organization, contribute. They've been attending some of the tiny home meetings. I just wanted to throw that in there, that they, they appear to be engaging on the issue in a broader manner than just cleaning things up, so. And I would just say on that front, I think through the summer, we would need to continue this effort. By the end of summer, we will have the NAM campus open. We will have some other things fully up and operational, which will hopefully have a positive impact. But I think until the end of summer, we would have to keep this on board.
All right. Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah, thank you. In this management structure, we have the art, art group, and we have the sustainability group. And I just wondered, I know maybe you were limited in space for your top three initiatives, but we just adopted a very ambitious sustainability plan. And I wondered, is it your expectation that the two employees will just go do everything or is there any money to put on any conferences or push out any of these initiatives?
Thank you so much for the question. To the first part, is there any money? Certainly, no. And that's true of every budget that we bring to you, right? And that's sort of the unfortunate reality of our situation. They do an amazing amount of work with the limited resources they have. And given the overall portfolio of demands for the limited resources you have, we could not bring to you enhancements from where they are right now. Of course, we would love to, right? That's amazing work they're doing. You know, we have Lynn Barker and Suzanne Linfante on that. They are putting together conferences and they are amazing at going out and finding grants to support some of our work. In fact, we've just picked up a new grant opportunity from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. There will be a memo coming out to you, I think, as soon as we're done with budget presentations. Just didn't want to confuse anything there. And, you know, for Ms. Barker, she has put together a pretty ambitious package, as you mentioned, out of essentially nothing. And we're relying on work from people in other departments and from outside agencies to help accomplish those goals. There is a sort of implementation matrix for that plan, but unfortunately, beyond pursuing it in that manner, we do not have in the budget any additional resources beyond what we've got right now.
Okay, so I was hoping that this might be the year, for example, that we start talking more proactively about composting, for example, which isn't covered in our waste management contract, to my knowledge, and is just a sort of an un, you know, there's a demand for it and it is even potentially a lucrative opportunity, but it needs some organization about it. And I think that was, I would call that in the lower-hanging fruit of some of the things that they could do. So it's just, we also, I know the mayor and I had talked to Lynn, I don't know, a year and a half ago, about implementing a program, a computer program, that would provide feedback on the services provided by waste management and where we would actually see the data rather than just waste management. We could understand what our residents are experiencing. So those were just some hopes. You didn't mention them, so I wanted to ask about them. And then I guess I would just finish by saying, whether it's the clean and safe or the arts or the sustainability program, I think it'd be helpful for us offline, maybe in a memo form, to just understand what, what are their goals for this year? What do they hope to tackle? I mean, they do have two people. The arts have a couple folks. The clean and safe will have a couple folks. What are their goals this year and what do they hope to accomplish so next year, when we get to this point, we can understand what they've been working on and whether they, how successful they were? Thanks.
As to the latter, we can certainly make a note for your next year's budget presentation to get you some information well in advance of that, probably even before you approve this one. As for the other statement with regard, those were both sort of waste management asks and we are in the middle of negotiations with waste management right now. I believe a contract is coming back to you March 25th at this point. I will say that there are many things we could add into that contract. It does require a policy decision, however. Anything we ask them for, they will, my guess would be they will happily do at a price and that is a price that they're going to pass along to your constituents. And that's something we're very, very sensitive to, particularly right now.
Okay, so I guess I don't understand and I don't want to belabor it, so maybe you could, I don't understand that we're redoing our waste management contract. Is that what you're saying?
Every so many years, the waste management contract is up for sort of review. I think to call it a renegotiation might be a little strong, but Mr. Shipman in the city attorney's office and Ms. Barker have been working with them on a product to address some concerns that you brought up with them last year. And there, you know, there will be some sort of service enhancements. For example, waste management, we are proposing, will come and dispose of waste at all of our parks facilities instead of having our park staff take that waste to Corp Yard and having them pick it up from there. And, you know, things like that that operationally would benefit us. There are some, some things with regard to e-waste recycling and some other items that we have included, I believe at your request, Councilmember, that will provide an expanded portfolio of service to your constituents as well. So, yeah, and that process is ongoing.
Well, this is terrific news.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really happy to hear this. So I'll leave my time, but I just, these are the kind of positive things I think we just need to be able to report. And that's great news. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Councilwoman Breckus? No? Okay. All right. I don't think anything else. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you for your time today. Thank you for your time today.
I so rarely come to the podium, I probably should have walk-up music. Do you? I don't know what song that would be. That's a good one. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. To be brief, as you have had three consecutive days of lots of asks and lots of information, City Clerk's Office, Ashley Attorney. City Clerk, for the record, we are a department of eight FTEs. As you are all very aware, we serve three core services for the City of Reno Council Support: Public Records, Requests, Records Management. Additionally, we have central cashiering that lives in our office pursuant to charter. All the money comes through us in some capacity or another. Top accomplishments for this year, I'll keep these brief, as you'll get to see these in much more detail when my annual review comes before you next month. Top accomplishments, we are in the process of currently doing a massive overhaul of the way that we manage our records at the City of Reno. You will constantly hear from this year from my office of us needing to push ourselves into a position of pushing information out to the public in lieu of being in a position of polling. We are seeing these numbers go up at an exponential rate, and to be very frank, we cannot keep up with them. So, we have to change the way in which we do business. So, we're currently implementing a digital document management software. We had an existing one that was 16 years old with no updates, so we are currently rolling out the new one. We have about 30% of our documents have been converted. When we reference documents, we have 16 million documents that have been digitized. That is not pages, that is documents. So, a council packet of 3,000 pages counts as one document. We've centralized all the public records requests into our office. And additionally, something that I am very excited and proud of is implementation of DMV holds. That has been 12 years in the making, and we finally went live this year. Our major initiatives coming up this next year are going to be the continued and completion of the electronic document management software. This is in works with IT and relies heavily upon them and their staff. We are also in the process of implementing our destruction process and program as something that council adopted this by ordinance last year. Additionally, we need to, as I mentioned, focus on a way to push information out instead of being in a position of poll. Our financial summary within the City Clerk's Office, you'll notice there is a slight uptick in salaries. This is for two reasons. The first one is I believe in paying people for the job that they're doing. So, you will see some reclassifications have happened this last term. Additionally, we believe in providing the best customer service that we can to our constituents, as many constituents' only interaction with their government is through the City Clerk's Office. There is a slight decrease in the services and supplies. We moved over some of the monies for parking as that went live. There was actually a budget change last fiscal year that finally transferred over in October after about a year and a half. Interesting thing in reviewing, as I've been your clerk for five years now, this is my sixth budget cycle. And upon that, looking at the last five years, there have only been two departments in the entire City of Reno that have not experienced an increase in staffing levels in my time here. Those two departments are the City Attorney's Office and the City Clerk's Office. While each of you know, we have been responsible for implementing multiple new projects over the years with no additional resources or staffing. Our request this year, first and foremost, number one priority is document destruction, as I mentioned, of those 16 million documents, plus the tens of thousands of boxes and hard copy paper that we have. We have documents that are far beyond retention, creating additional liability, and also creating thousands of documents that staff have to review every time we have a public records request. They're no longer necessary and no longer have useful life, but there is cost to get rid of them. Additionally, the request for a person, a body, is an OA2. This is an entry-level position. This is something, as I mentioned, we are one of only two departments that have not received any change in staffing levels. Actually, since the recession, we've seen no increase in our department. We've been doing our best to get by the last five years with using temporary staff to try to fill holes. We are finding this to be increasingly more challenging. I can't find college kids interested in coming to do and work at a part-time job. Internships are not viable for them. And we are having increasingly difficult time finding people who are qualified, who are willing to work part-time for us. In this job market, as you've heard from multiple other departments, what we're looking at as a region is changing. And that talent attraction and then talent retention are one of the two things that keep me up at night, the first being records. So, that is our request. As we have mentioned, we've gone by with temps, but we're just finding that we keep continuing to come up short and can't facilitate all the information and new programs that we're being asked to implement.
All right. Thanks. Good job. Anyone have any questions? Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, I thought, you know, we meet quarterly, and I thought the priority was going to be for records management.
So, that's part of the reclassification-
Reclassification, okay. Can you explain that?
Yes. So, pursuant to charter, I have two appointed positions: Chief Deputy Clerk, who acts in my absence when I'm not here, and the secondary piece is a records manager. We've not had a records manager at the City of Reno for near 13 years now. So, from monitoring for the past few years, looking at salary savings and pushing additional duties where we can to my existing staff, and then looking for salary savings, we were able to reclassify an existing position into a records manager position, as I mentioned, paying people for the work they're doing. That position is currently being recruited for right now.
Okay, okay. That's-
So, we're mid-year, there's no impact to that, but it's currently listed. Anyone who's interested or knows someone who would like to overhaul a record system from the bottom up, please submit your application, Reno.gov.
Yeah, it's very specialized, and I was here when they brought on the last records person, or maybe there were two, and I recall-
There used to be six people in that division.
Yeah, I recall what a big deal it was for the city when they stood up that function, and they made progress. And I just, I'm very happy to know that, so the new asks are backfill to the one that was reclassified?
The new ask is part of a backfill, and then additionally, this OA2 would actually be support for that records manager.
Okay.
Because through the overhaul of the records conversion, destruction, training internally, public records request, this person's going to need some support.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I get that. I just, I'm just glad to know. And I know we have these one-shot, person-shot professionals functions that then want administrative, and we'll see where things go. I mean, we've got a finance director who's not recommending we add any bodies, but I'm very pleased to hear that we brought the records management person on because the auditor, the risk management, the records manager, I think are just so critical liability, risk, obviously, functions that evaporated. And with that one coming on and the risk hired, I feel much more comfortable about where we're at. I wish we had more people in HR, but, you know, and of course, the public safety, but-
And there's inherent risk associated with records being in the state that it is, and that's part of the overhaul is necessary. So, we're looking forward, it's very unusual for a city of our size to not have a records manager. Very, very unusual.
Right. Councilwoman Darden? And then I'll go to Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you very much. So, maybe this is more of a tee-up for when your review comes, to kind of give you a heads-up. So, the DMV hold and what that has translated into, will we be able to capture what that-
You will be able to see that the money that we've brought in for the last year pays for that new position.
Okay. That's, that was helpful.
It's not reoccurring, so Debbie won't let me actually use it because it's not guaranteed. However, we have seen a large uptick, and I'll be bringing those numbers forward to you. And that has transitioned over to neighborhood services, so we're nice that we were able to package up and send it off. And it's proving to be valuable to us, so we're excited about having that compliance from that program.
Good. Speaking of compliance, also a report on the new legislative requirements on records requests turnaround and how we are doing with regards to that, kind of goes back to the records manager and the ability to produce those on the fly. You've done a tremendous job. We just need to know that when you're out, which is a rarity, that the ship's still smooth sailing and that the records are produced in the same expedited manner and still meeting the letter that we have committed and are being held to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Reese, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, I don't understand asks three, four, and five for temporary staff. What's going on there? Are those seasonal things, or does something happen where you need to bump up? Like, why can't we just give you a full-time person rather than temporary staff? What's going on?
So, I would much rather prefer a full-time person, and we've requested that every year. The general belief is that temps have been less of a cost. So, ideally, we would have an OA2 come in as an entry level in lieu of the temporary staff. So, in the past, in finance, their policy is that we have to re-request temporary staff every year. So, currently, this temp staff is what we use to actually scan in documents for multiple departments. But the idea would be that an OA2 permanent person would come in, and then we would no longer need any temps in our department. Would be ideal. And that's the ask. If two goes through, three, four, or five, go away.
Okay. Now, that makes a lot more sense to me.
It's an if-this, then-that.
Okay.
Or then-not-that, is the case maybe.
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Dorr?
I'm good. Great job, Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. I think we're good.
Madam Mayor, and last one is City Attorney's Office. He's the only thing holding you between you and an adjournment.
I don't remember doing this last year. And again, this is the third department that is not asking for additional resources. One of three. I know, but we need to give them something for not, a prize. You get a prize. Here, we've got a $40 hand sanitizer. It wasn't $40, I'm just kidding everyone out there listening, but I saw that they were going on eBay for $40. Okay? We did not pay that, I just wanted everyone to know. We did not pay that. Okay. Take it away, Mr. Carl Hall, City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council and Assistant City Manager. City Attorney's Office provides a number of services through our 29 full-time employees. We have six attorneys on the criminal side and seven support staff. And on the criminal side, we have 12 attorneys with four support staff. Before I get going too far down the road, I'd like to say that my support staff on the criminal side do an amazing job. They're handling approximately 1,300 cases a quarter, and that equates to 40 domestic violence cases per month, 100, approximately 100 DUI cases per month, over 200 traffic citations per month, and non-traffic 150 per month. And that's a lot of information to document, shuffle, and get subpoenas out for, and provide our attorneys with the information they need to seek justice over in Reno Municipal Court. Likewise, the six attorneys that we have currently employed do an excellent job in seeking justice and doing right by our city residents and protecting our city residents from those DUI offenders and domestic violence people. On the civil side, we have an excellent crew. They do a wonderful job on so many different levels. Starts off with the Assistant City Attorney, Jonathan Shipman. He's a brilliant individual and a wonderful lawyer, a great mentor for all of our attorneys in the office. Does a wonderful job. Our support staff, once again. We have four administrative assistants, and they are top-notch. They're quality people. They keep all of our records straight, all of our calendars straight, all of our filings are done professionally, timely, and so I'm really proud of the work that they do. As far as our staff on the civil side, the 12 attorneys that we have, or 11 attorneys that we have, are excellent attorneys and good people. So, I think you, as a city council, should be very proud of the work that those folks do for you and our residents. Our core services on the civil division, obviously legal services to every department in the city, establishing client relationships. And I think it's important to talk a little bit about client relationships. As you know, we provide services to every department in the city. And through Sabre Newbies Initiative to Improve Culture, we meet regularly, the management team meets regularly to discuss culture and other issues that, you know, come forward on a regular basis. And I think those efforts have really increased the communication level, the cooperation level, and the ability for our office to provide services to all those different departments. We also look to resource efficiencies and employee enhancements. The criminal division, we have arrest warrant services, arraignment and trial services. We'll be starting jury trials here shortly on domestic violence cases. Victim witness services through our two victim advocates. Grant program services, community outreach and training, and traffic arraignment. Our risk division, we administer the risk fund, exposure reduction, pursue recoveries and insurance coverage. We look forward, and the risk division are looking, working with their new risk manager. I can also say that we have been working all of the policies, renewing, reviewing, and increasing all of our citywide policies to reduce our risk. We've been doing that through the city manager's office and through Amber Derlich. She's done a great job in assisting us in that and making sure that we're reviewing those for legal compliance and reducing our risk exposure. Our top accomplishments, last year, we completed amendment of adult business code titles four, five, and eight, negotiated and executed a long-term lease with Sky Tavern, worked with our municipal court judges to address drunk driving and other criminal behavior through diversion courts, programs designed to address the underlying issues of addiction, anger management, mental health issues through rigorous program counseling, drug and alcohol testing, and regular progress reporting. You know, as you know, we've been heavily involved in addressing the homeless issues, not only through community court, but also trying to provide guidance to, you know, our legal teams and our cleanup teams. Our major initiatives and strategies, we plan to address anticipated increase in civil litigation caseload. As you know, we have a number of complex litigation cases going on, not only from personal injury-type cases, but also, you know, land use and basically every type of litigation that you can imagine. We will support comprehensive amendment of Title 18 and aggressively prosecute domestic violence cases. Our budget, obviously, we're, you know, a service department, so the only increase in budget has been salary increase. Other than that, I'm ready for questions.
All right. Great job. Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, good job. I mean, I think growth, a growing city, really impacts your office in particular. We know the, you know, the runs for service on the public safety, but I think it hits here essentially. So, the 3.1 salaries, the 2.4, that'll run with our, that resolution for the non-covered folks that hopefully we'll see at some point. The one thing I want to ask you about, and it has grown actually, is the services and supplies is up to 365,000. Could we get a breakdown of that? I'd like to know how many, how much of that is outside legal counsel? I know, you know, you and I have a difference of opinion. I believe that when outside legal, the charter says that when outside legal services are required outside of your office, it's a vote of the council. And I believe that you should be bringing those to us, frankly. That's my read of this charter. And so, I'd just like to know what you've been hiring within your department head level, right? And obviously, we have our procurement policy we're going to be kind of spending time on. But you have, I would imagine that 365,000 is some of those contracts you have?
No.
Oh.
No. Those fees, the majority of those fees are professional services that we needed to hire to defend the Lemon Valley lawsuit, so that's the majority of those, you know. And then, also in Kathy Woods, we had to hire some experts to testify, so most of those fees are for outside experts.
Okay. Not, not-
The only attorney that I have hired in the recent past was to assist us in an investigation in an HR matter. So, you know, that's not actually providing legal services, it's more of investigative-
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, that's what your funds, your services and supplies are for litigation support?
Right.
And, okay, okay. Well, then, that's-
Let me break that down.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I have, go on, right ahead. Councilwoman Darden?
Thank you. I'm kind of liking these, the way these hearings have kind of gone out, not only for our benefit, for the new members in particular, to kind of hear from all the different departments, but it's been very nice to have this all kind of captured for the public and have all the departments kind of hear, the other departments, and we collectively to hear it in three consecutive days. I think it gives a nice picture of all the needs and the very little resources that we need. It's also giving us an opportunity as a council to kind of say thank you, which we, I know Councilwoman Reese and I took an ice cream truck around and said thank you this last summer, but the City Attorney's Office doesn't get a lot of kudos. You guys deserve, I mean, every time I come down there- You guys deserve, I mean, every time I come down there, you guys are working your tails off. You have a tremendous caseload. You have a great bunch of attorneys that are working with you. And I just wanted to extend my appreciation for all of the work you all do in a very, very busy department and under your leadership, Carl, so I just wanted to just express my appreciation for you.
That's greatly appreciated, and I just have a great group of people. They're just, they're just solid folk.
You do.
That do a great job, and they're dedicated to, you know, to you and our community. And, you know, I think we get a lot of support from all the different departments as well. I think we have a great relationship with all of our departments. I think that's reflected by our client satisfaction survey, which is over 94% on a 10-point scale. And so we do get a lot of support from the other departments. They work closely with us, they communicate with us, and we're, and as a result of that, we're able to provide, you know, good services to them and in a timely fashion. So I'm very proud of the office and the people that were in our office. Thank you.
That's for sure. Everyone in your office is amazing. They're all great.
Very fortunate, yes.
Any other questions? Carl, let me ask you. I can't, for some reason, I can't really even see right now as I'm looking at this. Does it say, oh, there we go. Thank you. It's getting so much worse. I'm just fighting going up to the one point, or almost the twos, fighting it.
You want to borrow my readers?
Yeah, I do. I do. How many openings do you have in your department right now?
Zero.
Zero, okay.
Yeah, I haven't asked for any additional staff. I know that on the criminal side, my support staff is thin. I know they work very hard. I've had some overtime issues. I've had, you know, if somebody's out sick or on vacation, they're stressed out. I do bring in interns during the summer. You know, law students come in during the summer, and they help quite a bit with the filing and-
Yeah, that's good.
-so on, and we do that every year. And that gives a little bit of relief to the support staff. But if I were going to ask for a position, it would be, you know, on the criminal side and the support staff. But they are keeping their head above water, and they work, like I say, you know, very hard and do a great job.
Yeah, okay, good.
Can I ask, among the, along the managers or the mayor's question, when we get the risk manager position, do you have a halftime or a one administrative support for that? Is that going to roll over to the finance department, that person?
No.
That'll stay there?
Yes.
Okay. And will that person be able to cover other things then?
Well, that person does cover other things as well.
Other things, okay, so that'll stay with-
So that's other support staff on the civil side. Yeah, so that person assists in looking at all of the risk claims that come in, and then also supports in other capacities as well with our standard litigation caseload.
But you said that if you needed, were to ask for something, it'd be on the criminal side?
It'd be on the criminal side, yes.
Because you're standing at these jury trials and all that?
Right, and, you know, with more police officers, more case, more cases come through the office, and that's an awful lot of documentation to, you know, deal with. So, I mean, for example, you know, there's one individual that deals with most of our DUI cases, and when you're getting 40 DUI cases-
Yeah, because police are out there.
That's a lot of paperwork. I mean, you're talking about, you know, all your subpoenas, all your support documentation, and, you know, typically, you're talking about three or four individuals that are going to be testifying on a DUI case.
Yeah.
If there's an accident, for example. And so it's just a lot of paperwork.
I mean, hopefully, having a risk manager, if they're going to do one thing and help one department's load, it would be, in my mind, the litigation side load. Maybe it'll have implications other places, but hopefully, that person can, you know, do some navigation to other departments that are getting approached with stuff. I don't, I don't know. Maybe fiscal, too.
The goal with the risk manager is to take some of those duties off of the attorney that's currently doing risk manager work. The administrative support will absorb within the finance department until we figure out what the needs actually are. And then we'll, once we stand up a program, we may know there's additional needs for that program, but we need to work with both the City Attorney's Office and the HR Department to pull in some of the things they've been doing to kind of cobble together a risk program and create a program. We will support that person until such time as they outgrow the support we have within our department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great job. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no further budget discussion today, and we have no general public comment unless Ms. Lochner would like to comment. I do not believe she does. That's what we're looking for.
Hold on, one thing I want to, I want to talk about really quickly, Debbie. Because I think we all, as uncomfortable as this is, we all have to talk about it. You know, lots going on lately in the news, right? And if you're looking at the stock market, I mean, I'm glued to CNBC every morning. And so if you look and see the swings going on in the stock market and sort of what's happening in the bond market as well, it gives me a lot of cause for concern. So going into this budget, I think we need to be really clear about what we approve for this budget, but also being really direct with some of the positions that we end up bringing on. And I almost think, you know, to some capacity, that we need to really be clear about that messaging, that we could see ourselves in a recession. And if that were to happen, we could be hiring people and then letting them go.
That is always something that we-
I know, it's always, but I think now more than ever, right? During this time, the volatility is really causing-
The volatility we're seeing in the market right now is really created by Washington, DC, as well as the coronavirus. So we are watching that, but I can assure the council, if you've looked at our 20-year spreadsheet, that kind of shows the history of recessions.
Yeah.
The first thing that we will see the pressure on outside of maybe building activity, which is still very robust, will be our C-Tax revenue.
Sure.
We get that every month, and we report to the city manager. It's still growing.
Yeah.
So that's the revenue source that we're continuing to watch. If that does start to flatten, we may be back in front of this council looking at some of those things that are not necessary, but, you know, the things that we put in the budget that are initiatives that we'd like to move forward, we may have to scale back. We're not at that point yet because our C-Tax is still growing.
But let me, I-
But we do watch it.
Right, right. And I know that, but let me just also, I want to clarify one thing, because I believe this to be true. Reno hasn't followed a traditional path, and because Reno was the, one of the highest, well, Nevada, highest in foreclosures and unemployment, I think we sort of follow this different trend than the rest of the country, especially like, you know, we went down so fast and we went up so fast. I think we see the ripple sort of on the end of what other people see, so it doesn't hit us quite as fast.
It hits, it hits Reno, yes. So we don't watch what's happening nationwide. We actually watch what's happening in Reno. And we look at the revenues in Reno. And from what I've seen, you know, yes, Reno lagged and was hit harder.
Yes.
So we continue to watch that, and you rest assured that we have some triggers we're watching for, and they're not, they're not happening yet.
Yeah. And I would just say, I think we weren't, this council was not part of it, but the last council, they had to lay off, I remember, 700 people. That was really hard, really difficult. So I just always want us to have that, you know, constant conversation, especially in this time when you're seeing, you know, the feds drop the interest rate. You know, I mean, people are, and of course, we don't want anyone to panic. We want them to be prepared, but don't panic. But even still, I think there is some unsettling in the market. People are talking about it, and if we should find ourselves in a recession, I don't want people to think that, you know, their job is not secure, but at the same time, bringing these on, we might have to look at them at a future date.
So, and again, you know, we didn't have the tools back then that we have now.
Okay.
We've put together, you know, that 20-year history to capture two recessions so that we could really study what happened-
Okay.
...before and after those recessions. So, I mean, this goes back to, you know, quite some time, to prior to the last recession, goes to the one prior to that.
Yeah.
So that tool did not exist before.
Yeah.
We also have a 10-year financial forecast that did not exist before, so we're able to actually manage our budget on a more data-driven scale than we've ever done in the past. Before, it's been, we feel like something's happening, but we didn't have data to support it. And now we're really are looking at the data to help us drive, coming back to council when we need to talk about those things.
Okay, yeah. I just want to put it out there on the radar.
And again, what you're saying really supports my recommendation. I do recommend, after hearing all the departments, yes, there are some needs.
Yeah.
And I never fully expected that you wouldn't add staff.
Sure.
I still recommend we don't, but targeted investments throughout the organization are going to help us better position this organization for the future, for when we're not having those pressures.
Yeah, okay. I think you've done a great job. You're very, very good at your job. I'm impressed, and we're lucky to have you. So thank you so much. I know it's probably been a long three days, but I do, I want to thank you because I think, I think you're fantastic.
Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
I just want to say thank you to this council. I think it is so cool that after last year and being new, and I know with Councilman Reese as well, this is like the best. Just because the public now can hear, we can go back and look at the same things if we have concerns, we want to go back and see something. But I want to say thank you to all of you, because, Madam Mayor, this was the best that we could have done.
Well, that's all her.
Yep. And I know, I know she really put it all together, but it took the council to say, this is what we wanted. And I appreciate that, and thank you.
Well, it helps all of us understand what departments need and where they're going in the future. And so it is, it's really been a great process, so thank you.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to follow on Councilwoman Weber's comments, because I too, this is exactly what I have been envisioning for a few years, just getting a better understanding of where the departments are and where they see themselves going, where their needs are, having them basically pitch us on their needs and support those needs and defend those needs, and then lay out what their strategic objectives are. I think it's been incredibly helpful, best one we've done in six years. So thank you to our manager for making that happen, because I think it starts at the top. She heard us, and she did this, and she hasn't even weighed in. So we're getting everything raw from the department's request angle. So I just really appreciated it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I echo that a lot, too. I really think the participation's been good, and it's been a good week. It's been an exhausting week, but I think it's been a very good week, and I'm excited to see what are our next steps. And I think I really am ready to have that revenue options discussion, too. So go budget team, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Madam Mayor, you're adjourned.